All right, can we start?
Wait, one more.
I just want to watch the basketball. We good? Good evening. The April 1st, 2024 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We'll now hear the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Ledbetter.
If you all please join me in standing. Before I begin, I would like to just ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of the victims and all those affected by the recent collapse of our Francis Scott Key Bridge. Now, I invite you all to pray with me in a manner consistent with your faith and beliefs, as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. As we gather here tonight, we ask you, Lord, for your guidance and wisdom. May we listen with intent, debate with respect, and work together for the common good of the communities, the people, and the county we serve. We ask this in your name, Lord. Amen. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 10-24.
Resolution Number 10-24. Resolution appointing an administrative officer to the county council. Whereas Section 302B of the Anarundel County Charter and Rule 2102 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council authorize the appointment by the county council of an administrative officer, now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that it hereby appoints Kaylee Schultz as administrative officer to the county council, and be it further resolved that Kaylee Schultz will begin her service as administrative officer on April 11th, 2024.
Thank you. Is there any discussion at this time? Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. This really isn't discussion exactly about the appointment, but how we ended up here. I'm really pleased that the council has found a path to move forward with a new administrative officer, but I still have a lot of concerns about how we ended up in this place, and I hope that we don't just let this go. I think there are reasonable questions that need to be asked, and I intend to continue asking them. With that, I will support the resolution.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 10-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 10-24 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Resolution 11-24.
Resolution Number 11-24. Resolution appointing an assistant administrative officer to the county council. Whereas Section 302B of the Anarundel County Charter and Rule 2102 of the Rules of Procedure of the county council authorize the appointment by the county council of an assistant administrative officer, now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that it hereby appoints Marcia Alvarado as assistant administrative officer to the county council, and be it further resolved that Marcia Alvarado will begin her service as assistant administrative officer on April 8th, 2024.
Thank you. Is there any discussion at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 11-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 11-24 has been adopted.
Thank you. Before we open our discussion in public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in the audience, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Madam Chair, there was nothing received ahead of time. This is specifically testimony that was submitted online that I'm speaking to. We did not have any online submissions before the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. We have two individuals signed up ahead of time. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. This is our invitation to audience, so this is testimony regarding... This is testimony about things not on the printed agenda. So we're going to start here. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Thanks. I'm Donna, D-O-N-A, Rutteroe Stern. I reside in Anarundel County in Westonapolis area at 32 Collison Road, 21401. I'm here regarding the bills that are on the agenda for zoning for commercial that I oppose.
Okay.
So am I in the right place at the right time to?
No.
Okay.
So you can take a seat in the audience, and when we get to those bills, you will have an opportunity to speak at those public hearings.
Thank you. It's my first time. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you. Ma'am?
Ellen Moss. I live in Jessup, 7503 Gina Nicole Lane. While... And I appreciate the time to come and speak. While you are debating on zoning for Region 2, I'd like to tell you about the community of historic Jessup and why we are so vocal about preserving it. Consider this, not too long ago, rural zoned portion of West County. I'm referring to an area that is one mile by three miles long.
Ma'am?
Yes. I just want to tell you about the character of Jessup.
I understand, but that is really in the spirit of Bills 6 and 7 that we have coming up in the agenda.
Well, I just want to describe our community to you, so you know what it is you're voting on.
Ma'am, but you'll have that opportunity at the public hearing for Bills 6 and 7. Thank you. You can hand it to the secretary, and we'll... Sir, is this regarding region planning in Bill 6 and 7? Sir, you?
Unfinished business.
It's what I mentioned last.
I really want to just talk about some general issues that still exist for Jessup. So I mentioned it the last meeting or two, but I wanted to give you a little more detail that we didn't give you before.
I think in the spirit of Bill 6 and 7, that's on the printed agenda already.
Fortunately, none of this stuff is in Bill 6 or 7, and unless Pete changes his mind, it won't be. But I'd like to know that we still are expecting things the county to do that they promised in 2004.
Okay. So that topic wholly is already on the agenda for Bill 6 and 7, so if you would come up during the public testimony portion of those bills, I would appreciate it. Ms. Johnson?
Could I make one understatement first? I just wanted to say, I appreciate Lisa, Amanda, and Julie's staff for quickly responding and acknowledging the emails that I sent. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I can't read the papers in front of me because somewhere I've dropped my glasses, so this will be a challenge, but what I... One of the topics that I was encouraged to bring up with, or bring up, is that Councilwoman Radveen raised the issue that we want to fix things now because we've got all these other groups coming up, so we need to know what we need to fix. And one of the issues was that you know that there has been a lot of distrusts, a lot of discomfort, a lot of, you know, "there's something wrong here" kind of stuff going on. And so what I was trying to do here was to point out to you that this has been a problem, that people feel worried about it, and that I know you don't want that to continue. And so what can be done, you know, to address this really urgent problem? You know, for example, in my neighborhood, which is the Ridgely Avenue corridor, they sent a letter, the OPZ, that is the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Ms. Johnson, just like your neighbors here, we are going to be hearing those bills, eight and nine, later this evening. They are on the printed agenda.
Right, but this is different. This is about what went wrong, you know, out at River Road, and how come, you know, because I thought you really wanted to improve the caliber and the quality of this, because the ultimate output comes from a letter that I received through, you know, a request for information for the zoning history, which was something that nobody seems to know about. Anyway, John Leopold sent a letter to the county council because there had been this big dispute over some bills, and what happened was, he explained to them why, and in that case, it had to do with spot zoning, et cetera.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dorothy Guy, 605 North Biscayne Road. I would like to address a procedural issue that this council has raised in its consideration of Bills 824 and 924. You've combined the testimony on both bills into one testimony, thereby limiting the citizens' ability to testify to two minutes on two bills. This has been extremely unfair to the citizens, who really deserve four minutes to testify, two minutes apiece on each bill. The council's reasoning for doing this, as it stated, is that these bills are related, and I give that to the council. They are related. As you know, 824 addresses the Region 7 plan, and 924 addresses the digital zoning layer. Because these bills are related, they should not be voted on separately. They should be tied basically together, and the vote for 824 should be taken first because the Region 7 plan and the digital zoning layer go together, and the digital zoning layer is dependent upon what is in the Region 7 plan. So 9-24 should not be voted on first. They should both also be voted on in a single council meeting, so that the public knows that they're going to be handled that way. I also want you to know amendments to 9-24 are needed. I will discuss those during my testimony on 9-24. So my request to you, the council, is that any vote on 9-24 that may have been held tonight, and I understand that it won't be, be rescheduled for the council meeting, at which time the vote on 824 be taken, and that 824 be considered first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. Matt Minahan, Chairman of the Growth Action Network, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. My topic today is the stakeholder advisory committees. Land use decisions are among the most serious and consequential that the council has to take on behalf of the citizens. It's appropriate and right to be thoughtful and deliberate, and particularly when you engage citizens in a high engagement stakeholder consultation process. And that's what has certainly happened in Regions 2, 4, and 7. Those citizens, 25, 30, 40 of them, spent 18, 20 months doing work guided by OPZ. They've come up with recommendations. I'm currently in the second tranche on Region 9, and we are doing really solid, thoughtful work that the committee is deeply committed to. The question I... And these committees are working the trade-offs among housing, and transit, and traffic, and commerce, and stormwater, and all the complicated factors that go into community planning. My invitation to the council is to be very thoughtful about what weight you give these stakeholder advisory committees. They've done the work. The professional staff from Office of Planning and Zoning has mostly supported most of their work. The PAB has mostly supported most of their work. So when you invite the citizens to get involved in the process, and then a developer or land holder comes forward with something that contradicts what they've done, I would encourage you to give it a second and a third and a fourth thought before you just accept what the landowner is asking for. And the other thing I'll mention is, twice in the lobby tonight, somebody said to me, gee, it's a real pain getting down here. When are we going to have hybrid meetings? And so I bring that back again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else at this moment in time in attendance that would like to speak on items not on the printed agenda? Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Radveen, so moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 18th, 2024.
Minutes of March 18th, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Radveen, and was followed by the pledge of allegiance led by River Hawk District Scouts of the BSA. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2024 meeting?
Radveen, so moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. The minutes of March 18th, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2424. An ordinance concerning current expense budget, third quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations. Bill Number 2524. An ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, codes and supplements. Bill Number 2624. An emergency ordinance concerning zoning, amendments to comprehensive zoning ordinance notice.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1224. Resolution recognizing Autism Awareness Day and Autism Acceptance Month in Anarundel County in 2024. Resolution Number 1324. Resolution confirming the appointments of residents of the county to serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County. Resolution Number 1424. Resolution confirming the appointments of members to the classified service to serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundel County.
Thank you. We will vote on Resolution 1224 first this evening. May I now get a motion to change the order of the published agenda so that we can hear and vote on Resolution 9-24 and Bill 15-24 after Resolution 1224? Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to change the order of the agenda.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to change the order has been passed.
May I get a motion to suspend Rule 5-103B2 so that Bill Number 26-24 can be heard and voted on April 15th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rule 5-103B2.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill Number 2624 on April 15th, 2024 has been passed.
Thank you. Bill 26-24 is scheduled for a public hearing on Monday, April 15th, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 12-24.
Resolution Number 1224. Resolution recognizing Autism Awareness Day and Autism Acceptance Month in Anarundel County in 2024.
Ms. Hummer, you're the lead sponsor on this resolution. You have the floor.
Yes. So the... Today... Well, tomorrow is recognized as World Autism Awareness Day, and this month is recognized as Autism Acceptance Day. And I think everyone in this room has been touched by autism in some way, with family members, or friends, or themselves. And our residents with autism bring great richness to our community, and this is a wonderful way for us to honor them. I want to thank some members of the Autism Society of Maryland, who are here this evening. Melissa Rosenberg, who's the Director of Autism of Maryland; Jessica Dedwiler, from the Anarundel County, the Resource Coordinator; Catalina Ramos, who's the Spanish Language Coordinator; and Lisa Widerlight, who's a board member, and her son Joshua is here as well. So thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 12-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 12-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1224 has been adopted.
Ms. Pickard? I should have said this beforehand. Could you ladies and Joshua please stand and come up here and be recognized for all your work for our community? I should have said that before I started talking. So come on up.
Yes.
Go down and get a picture. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 9-24.
Resolution 9-24. It is on here. We have quite the long agenda. Excuse me. Resolution Number 9-24. Resolution confirming appointment of a member of the Anarundel County Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board.
Thank you. This is an administration... Resolution. Ms. Schultz, you have the floor.
Thank you. Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 9-24 confirms the appointment of Rick Catterton to the county's Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board. Mr. Catterton is a full-time farmer and also an owner-operator of a commercial farm. He will be the fifth appointee to complete the board and will serve an initial five-year term expiring on March 17th, 2029. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is there any discussion, my colleagues, regarding Resolution 9-24? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 9-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive any online testimony ahead of time, Madam Chair.
I do have two speakers signed up. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. I'm... Maybe an error. But we have six seats, so if there are people here that want to speak on Resolution 9-24, you can come up, state your name and address for the record. I have Dorothy Nancy Guy. Okay. 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 Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I think some of you all remember meeting Mr. Catterton. He came and he testified about the grain elevator, and you recall that we had quite an interesting discussion about, you know, Anarundel County assuming the responsibility involved because the state legislature was paying the bill. And when I said, it was... It's always so nice to see my former students. And perhaps you recall that he just blurted out, "You gave me one E." And since then, I have been requested to, you know, bestow As and A pluses on lots of people. And he is really a very successful farmer. He really is a nice guy. And, you know, and he forgave me. But he didn't have to forgive me. He could have held, you know, held me in great anger, but he said, "It's okay." So I... But even without that, I would have supported him. He's a really nice person. He has deep roots in Anarundel County. So I hope that's an... Oh, and Mr. Volkey asked him about, "Well, how do we decide who we're going to hire to manage the grain elevator?" Do you recall that, Mr. Volkey? Yes, you do, because I asked the question, and you want an A+. You do not even want a D. No, you want an A+. So at any rate, thank you very much. Definitely, you know, this is a person who should be, and has the knowledge, experience, history, you know. Good God. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Resolution 9-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 9-24.
Resolution Number 9-24. Resolution confirming appointment of a member of the Anarundel County Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 9-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 9-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 15-24.
Bill Number 15-24. An ordinance concerning current expense budget, capital budget, and program supplementary appropriations.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Naomi Kerrigan from the Budget Office, David Braun from the Department of Public Works, and Greg Swain, our county attorney, from the Office of Law. Purpose of this legislation is to amend the FY 2024 capital budget and program by transferring an appropriation of funds from the CAO contingency account to the Office of Finance, non-departmental pay-as-you-go account to support supplementary appropriation in the Brooklyn Park Outdoor Rec Improvements Capital Project located in the First Council Manic District. This appropriation of funds will allow Anarundel County Capital Project to continue through the end of FY 2024. We're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion regarding Bill Number 15-24 for my colleagues? Did any of the... Did any of the representatives here want to add to the discussion? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 15-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I don't have anyone signed up ahead of time. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 15-24, please come up to the table, have a seat, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill 15-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 15-24.
Bill Number 1524, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Capital Budget, and Program Supplementary Appropriations.
Last chance, colleagues, for a little discussion on 1524. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 15-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1524 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1-24.
Bill Number 124, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Potentially Dangerous, Dangerous, and Vicious Animals.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Captain Jeff Adams from the Police Department, who oversees Animal Care and Control, and Greg Swain, our county attorney, from the Office of Law. This bill was the first bill introduced this year, all the way back in January 2. It has had a long road to get here. I appreciate all the conversations we've had. I appreciate especially the conversations I've had with the council member from District Four to continue working to address this issue in the future. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion at this time? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
We do have one speaker signed up ahead of time. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. We do have six seats at the table, so if there's more than that individual that has signed up that wishes to speak during this public hearing, please come up at this time. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. I have Ms. Jacqueline Kyle.
Ms. Kyle? Good evening. Jackie Kyle, 6339 Harris Heights Avenue, Glenberne. I'm going to be really quick tonight. The Animal Welfare Council would like to take this opportunity to thank the county council for moving forward with the cruelty and waiver of fees section on Bill Number 1-24. We strongly support these measures and are pleased that the victims of cruelty and neglect cases will soon have some relief. Once this bill is enacted, these poor animals will no longer languish for years in the shelter while their owners' court cases work their way through the system. We thank you for standing up for the victims of cruelty.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Can you hear me? Sandra Salvatore, 71 Red Cedar Road in Apple's, Maryland. I also wanted just to thank everyone for working and listening to our different perspectives and my concerns, having to do with what I kind of might call more structural things, having to do with the bill. And then we were all working for the same end. It's not the what, it's the how. And I appreciate that. Wanted also just make a suggestion, as I know that this topic will continue to be worked on, on the other parts that aren't getting considered at this particular moment in time. Recommendation or suggestion is for the fees that the county does impose on dangerous dogs and/or potentially dangerous dogs and such, acknowledging that's really, we kind of get to this case because people, fortunately, a lot of people don't really know how to have a dog in a society. So as I mentioned before, dog training has a lot to do with training the owners on how to be a good dog parent, and particularly in a society. So just consideration that we, in a future legislation, that we include some of that, some opportunity, just some basic training, whether it's at PetSmart or with all the great dog trainers we have in this county, that those fees can go for training so that we give a chance for the owners to learn how to be a better dog parent. And then that reduces the incidents that we find happening. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Last call for public hearing on Bill 1-24. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 1-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1-24.
Bill Number 124, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Potentially Dangerous, Dangerous, and Vicious Animals.
I believe we have a technical amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 17, is it?
Yes, Amendment Number 17. This technical amendment strikes language from the purpose paragraph to reflect changes made to the bill by Amendment Number 16.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment?
Yes, as those may remember, we scrambled a little bit last time, removing some language, and this is just fixing that we also needed to remove the language from the purpose. So it's just a technical amendment, clearing things up. And I appreciate Mr. Hunt saying, yes, we are going to continue working on this and getting the rest of this, address the other issues that were there. But I'm pleased that we've gotten to this point tonight. So I ask your support for this technical amendment. Move the motion forward.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Radveen, second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 17.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 17 has been adopted.
And with that, a technical amendment, we can vote on this bill this evening. Is there any further discussion at this time? Great. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 124 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bills, Bill Number 6-24 and Bill Number 7-24.
Bill Number 424, I think, is one. We need to do that first.
My apologies. Yes, we do. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4-24, a very important bill this evening.
Bill Number 424, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Hannah Dyer, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Anne Bedowski, and Jackie Atkinson from the Office of Personnel, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Bill 424 proposes recommendations that came out of the Personnel Process Review Work Group. One of the county executive's priorities this second term was evaluating government processes and identifying ways we can cut bureaucratic red tape and improve service delivery for our residents. This was one of those highest priorities. And I appreciate, and I know I speak on behalf of the administration, we really appreciate all the conversations we've had with all the council members about this process and how to improve it while also ensuring proper council oversight. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Dyer for any additional comments.
I have nothing else to add at this time, but happy to answer any additional questions.
Is there any further discussion? Again, my apologies. We wouldn't have actually skipped over Bill 4-24 in the end. Madam Secretary, did we receive any? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4-24. Did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive anything, Madam Chair.
We have no one signed up ahead of time, but if there's anyone here in the audience that would like to testify at this time on Bill Number 4-24, please state, come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. And you all have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 4-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4-24.
Bill Number 4-24, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel.
Any discussion? Final thoughts, Bill 4-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 424 has been passed.
Now, Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Numbers 6-24 and 7-24.
Bill Number 624, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Two Plan. Bill Number 724, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Two.
Mr. Hunt, this is, these are administration bills. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me I have Christina Pompas, Cindy Carrier, and Mark Wildonger from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. I know there are a number of amendments on these bills, so I won't belabor the points. And if Ms. Pompas has anything she wants to add.
Christina Pompas with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Chair Pickard, members of the county council. I did want to add a couple things this evening. This is the first time that we're going to have... You don't want to hear from me. Okay, you do. This is the first time we're going to have comprehensive zoning that is associated with region plans. And so tonight, the amendments are going to go in a unique order that I thought maybe I would talk briefly about. And that is, some of the applications for comprehensive zoning do require changes to planned land use or even development policy areas in the region plan. So there are companion bills, and my understanding is we're going to take the bills, we're going to take the amendments, not sequentially for each bill, but we're going to go back and forth a little bit. So just wanted to...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to take amendments basically by property. So if, if there's, I think everyone on the council understands that, but if we, if we get a little, it gets a little messy, we can stop and pause and make sure everybody's on the same page. Mainly, that's a note to myself. We have any questions at this time? Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for the last two, three weeks of pain. There's probably a couple dozen amendments you and I have been working on. They have not been submitted today primarily because I'm hoping the procedure that we think we've come to with this potential, uh, bill that we've just introduced today should allow us to make changes back to properties, or make those changes to properties without the signage requirement. Is that correct from the Office of Law?
You are speaking of the bill that was just introduced tonight.
It was.
On the 15th, and that's correct.
Correct. And so I was intentional about, and the reason I'm thanking you, because I feel like we've given you all this homework over the last month, and your office and your staff has been great with dealing with us and working with us. And I was trying not to pile on the homework, and hopefully this fixes that. And so my go is, all of those amendments may not even be necessary to vote on on the 15th if everything goes as planned, because then we could just, as far as, I should take that back. The signage requirement may not be necessary for those changes that we're going to make on the 15th for those particular amendments. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this now, because I didn't want to, in my head, proceed with, you know, these dozens of changes that I was trying to make to these unique properties, but yet, and then, because some of them don't have, may not meet the signage requirement. I was meeting with a guy last week, and he was evicted from his, he's in medical, he's an older gentleman, and the neighbor had to actually give me all the information. He's out of his house in a hospital, and the bank actually foreclosed on the property. And so all the other neighbors' homes in that neighborhood have their signages up, but yet this one house doesn't. And so that one may not meet that signage requirement, and I was concerned that if the bank takes ownership of it, they now will have a property that's R5 instead of R1, which is what a lot of the things that I'm going to be pushing in is bringing everything back to R1. And so I was concerned about that. And I'm bringing it up to the rest of the council members so they are aware of it as well, because there, that's one of like three cases that I've come across where the homeowner and getting that confirmation on the signage together may not be successful. And so it would jeopardize me trying to change that back to R1. So I'm glad we have this amendment or this bill that's going to be, this emergency bill, so that we can make those changes on the 15th, so that we can finalize the vote on the bill on the first. That's, or whatever the first Monday in May is. That's, is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Okay. I just want to say that before we did any amendment changes. But thank you, thank you, thank you for putting up with me over the last three weeks and your team with all of these different crazy, last-minute requests. So thank you. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm going to ask if anyone objects to the joint public hearing on Bill 6-24 and Bill 7-24, as they are both related to Region Two.
Is that a question directed at the council or the audience?
At you.
Yeah, no objection.
Okay. We'll now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 6-24 and Bill Number 7-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we received one submission for Bill 624 and three submissions for Bill Number 724. Every council member here received a copy of that via email. It's included in the summary that's posted online, and that will also be added to our meeting record.
We did have people sign up ahead of time using the signup tool. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. I have Mr. Yaus. Do I have that right? John Oleksi, Ellen Moss, and Gary Muller. Ma'am, did you also want to come up and speak?
You.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sir, you have the floor.
7619 railroad in Hanover. I appreciate the opportunity to address the city council. This is obviously in regards to the zoning change on the family property. I would also like to thank Pete Smith. You've helped us out. You've been there, and we have talked to you, and you expressed your support. Our family is grateful. We very much appreciate that. And you had a couple colleagues that responded to me. Thank you very much. We appreciate the time you guys took out of your busy schedule to get back to what is a very important issue to our family. Family's been there for well over 80 years. We have four generations living on the family property, with two of the children, two of our kids, getting ready to build on the property. It would be detrimental to the family, to our finances, and to the future and the heritage of the property off of railroad and Yaus if the zoning was to change. And they have, I spoke before, and I really do appreciate the response I got back with the email, Pete Smith's support. And sir, thank you very much. That's just what I have to say. I just want to reiterate how important this is to our family and what it means to our family's heritage. And thank you all very much for the opportunity to address it.
Yes. Good evening. My name's John Oleksi. I'm the president of the Josephine Improvement Association, 2920 Joseph Road. I'm here in opposition of Bill 6-24 and 7-24. I strongly encourage the county council, along with the support of my county councilmen and the county executive, to withdraw both bills and reconsider them in September. The problem here lies, as I know many of you are aware, is Bill 6923. Under the advice given by the Office of Law a little, about two weeks ago, the county of planning and zoning can on its own rezone private property in the county with... without obligation to notify the affected landowner. However, the affected landowner who must, who must know about the upzoning and petition the county council to return the zoning to its original classification. This also means the effective landowner, should, should he or she fail to petition the county council for the rezoning, will likely be on a hook for high property tax causing of this upzoning. To me and many of the residents of Jessup, this feels as a property taken by taxation. If this bill stays in its course, as is written presently, approved by, for a zoning two plan, but is changed later by the county council for other regions, you have initially, intentionally taken the land of a subgroup and residents within the county through a flawless rezoning ordinance with insufficient notice that then subsequent to changes the rules of the rest of the county. You compound taking the property clause with less than equal protection for all citizens. This is unequal application of the zoning law. Here is, there is no reason why you cannot amend sixty-nine twenty-three and remove the inconsistencies within this bill before moving forward with a comprehensive rezoning. For this reason, I am asking on behalf of the Jessup Improvement Association and its members for you to withdraw county council bill six twenty-four and seven twenty-four, reintroduce it in September so that proper notification can be made to the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moss.
Okay. Once again, Ellen Moss, seventy-five oh three, Gina Nicole Lane, Jessup, Maryland. While you are debating on Region Two, I'd like to tell you about the community of historic Jessup and why we're so vocal in preserving it. This, not too long ago, rural area of Jessup, we're talking about one mile by three miles. That's it. Very small section of land, but a big community at heart and spirit. We have four generations of family members that are living in the same area, that have lived here all their lives, and they're living side by side with new neighbors that come from all over the U.S. We have a community center that brings people together. We have challenges with environmental stresses such as airplane noise as we are under the runway path. We have train tracks because we're bordering the, the track, the Mark train. We have traffic congesting and flooding. But even with these issues, we relish and enjoy our green spaces, the trees, and the rural in-character nature of our beautiful community with single-family homes all zoned R1. Our neighborhood has many horse farms, farms with chickens, goats, guinea fowl, and such. We have deer, fox, coyote, along with other animals. We've even seen eagles from the wildlife, Patuxent Wildlife Refuge. We have two homes listed on the Anaronda County Historic Register and one original Sears and Roebuck home on one seventy-five. This small community would like to retain its rural historic character. Stormwater management is of utmost concern to the community. Neighbors living along intermittent and perennial streams and stream channels are suffering the effects of erosion and flooding. Some have seen flooding to their homes caused by the construction of new communities. Please help us preserve this rural gem in Anaronda County.
Thank you.
And I do have a handout that I printed out for everybody that we actually prepared in two thousand and eighteen at the beginning of this process.
Thank you. Mr. Muller.
Yes, hi. My name is Gary Muller. I live in Jessup, Maryland for the last seventy-three years. I want to address two major changes that are being proposed for our community. One is the small business zoning along one seventy-five from the BW Parkway to Jessup Elementary School. Small business zoning has been very successful here since it was implemented as described in the small area plan from two thousand and four. The small business zoning has provided a buffer between the National Business Park to the south, the commercial property to the north, and the R1-zoned family homes along the rest of one seventy-five. It works. Don't put commercial development next to our Jessup Elementary School and hopefully the, the future proposed nature park in Jessup, which hopefully you'll address. Don't change what's not broken. I also want to talk about mixed-use and transit overlay. This is a major, major impact in the Jessup community. This area consists of one lane, one seventy-five, one lane in each direction. It's all R1-zoned family homes. This is, this is where one homeowner concerned about the property. Well, as Ellen said, he had one of the old Sears and Roebuck homes. It's beautiful area. We don't want to transition into something which is not even defined yet. Adding mid or high-density development along this stretch of road would devastate into the community, destroy the character of the community, and would hinder emergency vehicles. Given the county will be redefining mixed-use in the future, it's likely for us that we see increase in stormwater problems, primarily those living in the relatively new community of Magnolia Creek on the north side of one seventy-five. They are downhill by thirty feet from this proposed mixed-use area, and water flows down. Some of these homeowners suffer from flooding basements in their yards right today.
Thank you, sir. This panel...
Madam Chair. I just, ma'am.
You may.
Thank you. So, Mr. Oleksi, I heard your comments, and you and I had a chance to speak, and we sat down and had time to talk. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at bill, I think it's twenty-six twenty-four that's coming in. It's the emergency ordinance that Mr. Smith referenced and was speaking about earlier. Okay. If you don't mind, please take a look at that, just because I think that coupled with some other things that we've talked to Office of Law about may alleviate some of the concerns, particularly for the Jessup community and changing zoning without the signage requirements, so that Jessup and all of Region Two, as well as Region Seven, will be treated the same way that other parts of the county are. So I just wanted to give that information to you, because that's what I think Mr. Smith was trying to relay to everyone when he was speaking earlier, is that bill may fix some of the sign problems that have caused challenges to getting this done on time. Briefly.
Deadline with that fourteen day, will this bill correct it? And can they still get on that amendment?
Yes. Well, I'll let Mr. Smith answer that.
Madam Chair, I don't want...
Go ahead.
It's for those properties that are trying to go back to what they are. That's where this is going to help. So if you have a property that is either, not consensus, what's the...
Consistency.
Consistency table, and the planning and zoning recommended a higher density level for that. If you want that property to go back to where it was, this alleviates the requirement to have that signage, which is, which would be a precursor to me, even putting in an amendment to change it. And so I'll be able to just add an amendment, change it without that requirement. So it'll make it so much easier on the fifteenth.
This deadline would be the fifteenth?
Yes. Yes. I would say the tenth, because my staff, we got a, or probably Office of Planning and Zoning, I want to give them ample time to, to weigh on this as well. I would say within the next week, if there's someone who is concerned about their property being increased, please come to me in the next seven days so that we can talk about what that looks like.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. You can hand it to Ms. Secretary right now. I hate to ask. Is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to speak on bills six dash twenty-four and seven dash twenty-four at this time? Sir?
Yes, hi.
State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
My name is Adrian Hood, sixteen sixteen Lindley Drive, Jessup. So I am the president of the Waterberry Forest HOA. Our Waterberry Forest is located right off of Race Road in Jessup, located near a property that's under consideration, in particular, application number CZ-R2-JSP-600, located at seventy-six thirty Race Road. Now, we learned of this amendment, or this amendment on March sixteenth, when a sign was erected along Race Road. We immediately took to soliciting the reactions of our homeowners, and it was abundantly clear that our community is overwhelmingly against rezoning to R2, as it would have a negative effect on our immediate area. We are delighted that the experts at the Office of Planning and Zoning, the Stakeholders Advisory Committee, as well as the Planning Advisory Board also recommend keeping this property as R1. For example, one consistent comment we received from emails, from comments to our website, from door-to-door talks, was that we wanted to maintain consistency in the neighborhood, one that is aligned with the intended vision for our neighborhood and to maintain the attractiveness of the wooded areas. We understand that letters were sent to everyone, and I sent letters, so thanks a lot for all who replied to mine. I appreciate that. Were written with this sentiment. And so our ask, our community's ask is, please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Kalila Empertress. My address is seventeen oh two Walcott Way, Hanover, Maryland. I want to thank you all for letting us speak today. My concerns have to do with the changes proposed to rezone four properties that total over thirty-six forested acres from R1 to R2. Only one of these properties have been through the GDB process with a recommendation from OPZ, SAC, and PAB to keep R1 zoning. Local roads that we have are dangerously narrow and severely limited site distances, rendering them unsafe to additional traffic. Existing ongoing stormwater management issues in the bordering community of Waterberry Forest, which I live, and numerous homeowners downstream of these properties would be intensified by allowing R2 zoning. For example, one of the new communities of Copperleaf have begun the project by removing trees and implementing their stormwater systems. Flooding on neighborhooding streets and property have added to the volume and intensity in flooding in the existing communities.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak today. So my name is Rockland Empertress, and I am the treasurer of the Waterberry Forest Association. My address is one seven zero two Walcott Way, Hanover, Maryland. I've been with this community for almost fourteen years since it was first developed. Our community is located off of Race Road in Jessup, which is adjacent to the land under construction for rezoning in the R, from R1 to R2, the amendments that have already been discussed around six dash six hundred dash zero zero three. Our community is a, a very diverse community, full of a lot of veterans and current military personnel. As a member of the homeowners association, I'm here to speak on behalf of our community expressing our deep concerns about the proposed rezoning surrounding the property from R1 to R2. One of our primary concerns in this proposed rezoning is safety, both in traffic and crime. Our neighborhood is currently peaceful, family-friendly, friendly, family-friendly area with streets that are safe for our children to play on and for our residents to walk, jog, and cycle. The tranquility of this, safety of our neighborhood are a large part of why it's such a desirable place to live and why we moved here. However, proposing this rezoning could significantly increase the density of our neighborhood, leading to substantial, substantial increase in traffic. Moreover, the vehicles on our roads would not only disrupt the peaceful and quiet current enjoyment, but also propose a safety risk to our children and other residents. It would also lead to parking issues, noise pollutions, and damage to our roads and increase wear and tear. In addition, our concern is around the potential rise in crime. As I'm sure you're aware, studies from the Urban, Journal of Urban Economics have shown that a higher population density can lead to an increase in crime, particularly in property crime.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, I did that right. My name's Georgie Muller. I live in Jessup. I've been there for seventy years, and I know I don't look that old. But I just want to add to what everybody's telling you. Basically, it's dysfunctional what's going on in Jessup and West County in general. When you start putting people on top of people on top of people, you get crime. When you congest the road that can't, there's no plan to widen that road, the community has to sit in traffic and fears for their life when they try to go out onto that road. There's road rage. There's ambulances and fire trucks and police cars going through our community at night. You hear them at night. That never used to happen. And it happens because we continue to do what is dysfunctional. And it's dysfunctional for society, and everybody can sit up there and be nice with your proper speak, but it's dysfunctional. It's sick. And until we address that, we're going to remain in this circular devastation for a long time. I know that some of you on this council have seen the results of the extra flooding since Arundel Mills started, and it's only gotten worse. And I think I sent Mr. Voki, I sent him pictures of my property being flooded. It's dysfunctional. You know, you can't do this. That's why there are so many movies that talk about big corporate people coming in and taking over property. You can own a property, but you have a responsibility to the community that you've joined.
Thank you. Mr. Minahan?
Good evening again. I spoke moments ago quite in a passionate way. I hope that the council would favor the work, would favor the work done by the SACs, engaging citizens for two years to think about their communities, consult their communities. And I want to make an exception to what I said about the Region Two SAC. The Region Two SAC, made up of about nine members, had four of whom were lobbyists or vice presidents for development interests. And I sat in on those meetings, and it was not a fair fight between people well-educated and well-schooled on development matters and five citizens who just went along. So I'm encouraging you to be skeptical as you read the plan for Region Two. I'm applauding Councilman Smith for trying to reverse some of what's in that plan. The transit-oriented overlay and the mixed-use overlay in Jessup don't fit with what's currently R1, inconsistent with what's in Plan twenty forty. And the consistency table converts a lot of the cross-zoning on properties that adjoin streams into R1. This is a community that's dying with stormwater issues. The county's Department of Public Works has been completely ineffective at granting permits and managing the runoff in these stormwaters. And if you convert these lands that adjoin the streams into R1, you're just going to be amplifying the stormwater concerns. So please listen carefully to what you're hearing from the citizens of Jessup. Take this SAC recommendation, this SAC's plan with a grain of salt, and thank you for trying to reverse some of what's in this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed.
Madam Chair, not a question. Not to this panel, but to the association, if they can reach out so that we can hopefully sit down over the next week, I would certainly love to get some feedback from you all, one-on-one, with your, with your group, if we can make that happen. All right.
Okay, this is the last opportunity for the public hearing for bills six dash twenty-four and seven dash twenty-four. Thank you, gentlemen. You are, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Malcolm Curtis. My address is sixteen twenty-six Lindley Drive. I am the vice president of the Waterberry HOA. As was mentioned, I am also worried and alarmed at the inefficient and inconsistent communications with citizens impacted. The inconsistent procedures are highlighted by the alarming number of citizens unaware of the interviews, questionnaires, public forums, postcards, and letters where changes were recommend, were recommended. I want to highlight indicated community events that many of the community from polling were not aware of. Over eighty percent of those in attendance were not made aware of or never heard of these community events. As was mentioned before, though the SAC has done admirable work, please take under serious consideration the communication that you may hear and receive from citizens that strongly oppose what some of the advisory committee indicates as the citizens and the communities desire. This inconsistent awareness and inefficient notifications make it hard for the community to bring information for... to bring information forward for consideration, which paints a grim picture that the interests of the people are at the forefront. It has been a very arduous process to ramp up and get information from our community only after becoming aware of the change once the sign was posted. As was mentioned by the president, we are asking for a vote of no for CZR2 JSP 600. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Carol Little. I live at 1621 Lindley Drive in Hanover. I am also a member of the Waterbury Forest HOA Board. I'm actually one of the originals, just like the Imperatris family, we've been there for 14 years. I'm actually the first president, so I'm actually have, just like Adrian, Curtis, and others, we have a vested interest. I want to make sure, as you're aware, that I'm here to speak in opposition also of 724. I am, I'm going to use the words of a gentleman back here, "I am a citizen who is not going along with this." I have, in the 14 years I've been there, I have been one of the folks who have been adversely affected by the stormwater. So I'm talking here not just about what we anticipate will happen with, if those two properties adjacent to our, adjacent to our neighborhood is moved from R1 to R2. I'm speaking on personal experience because of the stormwater issues I've had with my property. I had resolutions with other properties in my Waterbury neighborhood, and I'm also aware of what's happened with, with other properties in the areas, specifically areas such as Magnolia Creek. So I'm making sure that the council here is understanding what that I am as an individual representing a large number of other residents local to Jessup and Hanover in opposition for this. We've seen several properties who have had to deal with that stormwater, with the flooding in their, their residents, their neighborhoods, their basements, and understanding the, understanding the compromise can also be made, also compromises often made in the halls of places like this, but the compromises that are made here are pushed onto the residents when they have to pay out of pocket with their insurance and other, and other ways to pay for the flooding that's happening on their, on their properties. Specifically, the two properties that we're, that we're concerned about, where they, that Curtis mentioned, where they are located adjacent to our neighborhood, that stormwater and everything coming from them will actually go directly to our area. If you look at the topography of that, that is going to go directly into a stormwater management property that we already have. So it's not just history, but we anticipate, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. The public hearing on Bills 6-24 and 7-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 6-24 and Bill Number 7-24.
Bill Number 624, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan/Region 2 Plan. Bill Number 724, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning/Region 2.
Thank you. We do have amendments to both of these bills this evening. We're going to go ahead and get started with Amendment Number 1 to Bill 6-24. This is an administration amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment clarifies that the SAC recommendation to maintain adopted zoning changed the planned land use to reflect current uses and maintain the transit-oriented development policy area for the properties closest to the Dorsey Mark Station.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. This amendment is actually simply an edit. It occurs on page 47 of the region plan. It's in a section of the plan that talks about the guidance for future mixed-use zoning districts, and it's under the Dorsey Mark Station description. I happened to read it, I couldn't understand it, so we rewrote it, and we're asking for the amendment to be adopted.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number 1 to Bill 6-24? Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number 1 to Bill 6-24 at this time? Seeing no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1, Bill 6-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2 to Bill Number 6-24.
Amendment Number 2, this amendment adds three properties identified as Tax Map 13, Parcels 158, 174, and a portion of 181 that were not correctly identified as being a part of the National Business Park (C-O-P-T) properties on the special districts and economic centers map.
Mr. Hunt, Ms. Pampa, this is your amendment.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think Ms. Corby described it very well. We simply excluded two properties plus a portion of another that should have been identified in Figure 12, the special districts and economic centers map, as part of the National Business Park. So we've proposed an amendment to include them.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number 2 to Bill 6-24? Is there any discussion?
Second.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. These properties going into the special districts and economic centers, what's the impact on those properties in terms of what they can do versus if they're outside of those Like, is there an overlay? Are there different zoning requirements? I don't need the specifics right this second, I just am curious, does this make a difference for them in terms of development ability?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The region plan is not regulatory in nature, it is a planned document. This is simply about correctly mapping the areas that are owned by National Business Park and Copt. But it's not that because the map is correct that they could do something more, because that really comes out of the regulations in Article 17 and 18 in the code.
Okay, got you.
Ms. Radveen?
I think what you said may have answered my question, but the property owners are fully aware and support this, that they should be in these areas.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Yes, they actually brought it to our attention.
Thank you.
And I have the email chain.
Thank you. With no, oh, Mr. Smith?
No, I'm just going to clarify, that Copt Corporate Office Property Trust, that is the, obviously this is in my district, it is the NSA-controlled sort of business complex that is right outside of the Fort Meade on the western side of 295. So that's the, the complex that they're referring to, just FYI. I'm good with this one.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2 to Bill 6-24.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 3 to Bill 6-24.
Amendment Number 3, this amendment adds two properties identified as Tax Map 13, Parcels 158 and 174, that are part of the National Business Park (C-O-P-T) properties to the critical economic area.
Ms. Pampa, Mr. Hunt, this is another admin amendment. You have the floor.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Again, the property owner requested that the properties be added, and we agreed, based on the property ownership, the planned land use, and the zoning, it is consistent to designate these properties as critical economic on the development policy area map, the development policy area change table, and the development policy area change map. So we supported the change.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number 3 to 6-24?
Radveen, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, any questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3 to Bill 6-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, I have a question. For this, for the next amendment, this is a property we're going to need to amend both for Amendment 6, Bill 6 and Bill 7, are we going to?
That's correct. The next set of amendments are for the property known as 7960 Clark Road in Jessup, and they are Mr. Smith's amendments.
Okay, we're going to do each amendment separately.
We're going to do the Amendment Number 4 to 624, and then follow it up with the Amendment to 724, so that we keep those properties together.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4 to Bill 6-24.
Amendment Number 4, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as Parcel 49 on Tax Map 13, located on 7960 Clark Road, Jessup, from commercial to mixed use, and adds the property to the mixed-use development policy area overlay.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I was okay with approving or signing on to this amendment for a couple of reasons. I want to be clear on this. This particular parcel, which is at the intersection of two, by the Jessup Fire Station, essentially right in front of the Jessup Fire Station, it is, the zoning isn't so much the issue. Right now, it is zoned commercial, but it's the overlay that exists there from the Fort Meade overlay, has zero to do with zoning, but there is already a project there. The project is literally underway, and it's age-restricted housing. All I'm doing is, by creating a mix, it allows us to put other than age-restricted housing. It's already there, it's already approved, and they asked, you know, do we want to open it up for other families outside of just age-restricted? And I said I was okay with that because we have a housing issue. So that's exactly what this allows that property to do, and that's why I was okay with supporting this amendment.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Does the administration like to comment on Amendment 4 to Bill 6-24?
We can. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So the applicant did request the zoning of the property to be changed from C2, which is what the Office of Planning and Zoning recommended on the final draft maps, to MXDE. This change does necessitate a change to the planned land use and the development policy area maps in the region plan, as well as revisions to the change tables in the plan appendices. OPZ doesn't offer any objection to the amendment. The property is adjacent to MXDE's own property, Arundel Preserve, to the north, and is also located in close proximity to other mixed-use areas such as Parkside and National Business Park. Part of the amendment includes adding a development policy overlay of mixed use. This overlay allows property to be designated as a targeted development, redevelopment, and revitalization policy area while maintaining the underlying neighborhood preservation development policy area. That's a mouthful, I apologize. You can read more about the two new development policy area overlays on page 42 in the Region 2 Plan.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number 4 to Bill 6-24? Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask how the, I guess, when you think about the adequate public facilities test that a property would go through, I'm thinking this would have a different impact on schools. I don't know how many units are planned, you know, how many residential units are part of this, so if there's any information on that topic that you could share, that'd be
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think we may need to come back to you with some information on that, because I don't know if the property where it's located would exempt out of adequate public facilities. I don't know. So we'd need to do some research and come back to you.
So it doesn't, when the schools did the re-sort of shuffling of schools, it opened up that region. So the APF standard, they still have to comply with it, but it would meet that threshold.
To, I, I mean, I, you said you'd have to get back to me, and I just wanted to double-check, was that on the number of residential units, even ballpark?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I just want to remind the council, I work for the planning division, and I don't have a ton of crossover with the development division. I thought there may be a bill that would exempt this from adequate public facilities. Mr. Smith is saying that that's not the case. They would still comply with adequate public facilities, but with the changes in school adequate public facilities that were done last year, that school district is now not closed. That means the project, if it converts from age-restricted to market rate, would still need to comply with adequate public facilities when it goes through the development review process. But if the schools are now open, it doesn't have a roadblock that it may have had previously.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
There's no exemption to school APF.
Thank you.
I'm stating that, there's no exemption to school APF. The project would have to test. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 4 to Bill 6-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 has been adopted.
We're going to read the, into the, we're going to read in Amendment Number 1 to Bill 7-24, the companion amendment to the amendment we just read.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment changes the zoning for the property known as Parcel 49 on Tax Map 13, located on 7960 Clark Road, Jessup, from C2 Commercial Office to MXDE Mixed Use Employment.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Companion legislation to the previous, although comments I made on the previous kind of still apply to this one.
Christina.
And just for the public's awareness, you know, 624 is the plan for the area, and 724, yes, 724 is the actual zoning layer that we amend. So that's why we're doing both of these at the same time, because we're changing the plan of it and then making the companion change to the zoning map.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Ms. Pampa, did you want to say ditto, or?
Ditto. Perfectly spoken.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number 1 to Bill 7-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1 to Bill 7-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 to Bill Number 724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5 to Bill 6-24.
Yes, Madam Chair, would it help to, if, when we got to these sets, I just said the address and the sponsor quickly, so we stayed on track?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. This one is for the property that is known as Laurel Fort Meade Road in Laurel, and the sponsor for these two amendments is Ms. Hummer. Amendment Number 5 to Bill Number 624, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the properties known as Parcels 88 and 200 on Tax Map 19, located on Laurel Fort Meade Road, Laurel, from open space to commercial.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, this is some parcels along Laurel Fort Meade Road, close to the Laurel Racetrack. The frontage portion of both these properties is already zoned commercial, and this is just making it consistent for the entire parcel. The parcel does have some wetland-type areas in it, so even if it is developed, there'll still be a significant part that is left as open space because of protections. So, but this is just to bring the entire parcel under the same zoning. So I move forward and ask for your support.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
It's okay.
I interpreted Ms. Hummer's. Yes, I was saying it as a, as a motion to adopt. There we go.
Would the administration like to comment on this, Ms. Pampa?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Yes, this is a change, what's necessitated this change in the region plan is the request to zone the entire property, C4 Highway Commercial. It had been proposed as split-zone C4 and open space, but we do not offer any opposition to this.
Great. Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number 5 to Bill 6-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5 to Bill 6-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 5 to Bill Number 624 has been adopted.
Thank you. And as we just did previously, we're going to move forward with Amendment Number 2 to Bill 7-24.
eighty-eight and two hundred on tax map nineteen located on Laurel Fort Meade Road Laurel from O-S open space to C-four commercial.
Ms. Hummer, you have the floor.
This is just the companion to the previous amendment to actually make the zoning changes. So, motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Does the administration?
No, we would all offer the same comments.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two to bill seven dash twenty-four.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two to bill number seven twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number three to bill seven dash twenty-four.
Amendment number three. This amendment changes the zoning for the properties known as parcels one eighteen and one sixty-four on tax map seven located on seventy-six thirty Race Road and no number Race Road from R-one residential to R-two residential.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't see the dropout of.
It was the back one in the stack.
Say again?
It was the back of the stack. If your stack was ordered like mine.
Okay, no, I thought you said amendment number four, I'm sorry.
Oh, my apologies. Maybe I did.
It's three.
It is amendment, amendment number three to bill seven dash twenty-four.
Yes, okay. So what I want to do is, over the last two weeks, I have, probably three, going door-to-doors as best I can to as many homes in Jessup. In fact, just because most of the folks here are literally my neighbors, I live there in Jessup. My daughter and son went to Jessup Elementary School. They go to school at Chesapeake Science Point, so I drive down Race Road every, every, every day to pick up my son from school, and I live literally right across the street from that entrance. So I'm certainly aware of the impact in the community in these types of activities and how they can impact the community. But what I do want to do is, because over that three weeks, I was not able to get in touch with their community, specifically the Waterbury community specifically, and I think it's always important to have those conversations with communities that are impacted, because there is a balance between what an individual, what a community wants and what an individual landowner wants. It's, it's, it's a balance, right? And so I've tried my best to find that balance, because there were things, I think JIA wanted in some of the meetings that we've had over the last month and a half that I've had with them, that impacts other individual property right owners, and so I had to go to them and ask them, hey, what is your desire? And so there was certainly an appetite to create density throughout the county, even more so than R-two. In fact, the, most properties wanted to be R-five or R-ten and N-N-Out, and so I didn't think that was appropriate for Jessup, and certainly I was trying to meet somewhere in the middle on that. But I do think it's important to have that conversation with you. So I do want to hold this amendment and have that conversation with that community before we bring this back. So I'm going to withdraw, is that amendment number three, until that happens. So I will have that final decision by, obviously, the next meeting of April fifteenth or whenever we meet again. So I think that's the appropriate thing to do.
Okay. We'll move on to amendment number six to bill six dash twenty-four. Oh, Madam Secretary, please, please read the title of amendment number six.
We're switching, switching back to Laurel now. Amendment number six. This amendment changes the planned land use portion of a portion of the property known as parcel eighty-six, lot one on tax map nineteen located at thirty-six hundred Laurel Fort Meade Road Laurel, also known as the Laurel Racetrack, from conservation to mixed use.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, this is making, is really a correction to an area on the racetrack. There is a portion of that land that we originally recommended to be open space, but there is a roadway there that was not captured in the original parcels. And this is just to, to change a portion of that into, to fit the W-one designation so that that roadway can still be used. So I, motion to adopt, please.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Would the administration like to weigh in on amendment number six to bill six dash twenty-four?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We see this as a minor amendment to exclude a drive aisle from the open space zoning, so it's very small and we support.
Is there any further discussion on amendment number six to bill six dash twenty-four? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six to bill six dash twenty-four.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number six to bill number six twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number four to bill seven dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six to bill six dash twenty-four.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number six to bill number six twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number four to bill seven dash twenty-four.
Amendment number four. This amendment changes the zoning for a portion of the property known as parcel eighty-six, lot one on tax map nineteen located at thirty-six hundred Laurel Fort Meade Road Laurel, also known as the Laurel Racetrack, from O-S open space to W-one industrial park.
Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, this is just the companion amendment to. Oops, sorry, didn't have my thing on. This is just the companion amendment to make the actual zoning change to the previous bill. Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
The administration?
Same comments that we had for six dash twenty-four for this property at thirty-six hundred.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number four to bill seven dash twenty-four.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number four to bill number seven twenty-four has been adopted.
Well done, council. That concludes Region Two amendments for the evening, I believe.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just caught something, and I did want to just call attention to it. I wanted to note the certifications that we received.
Oh, my apologies.
We received certifications of sign postings, but also I did want to state for the record that several of these applications were also posted on the website for the minimum of fourteen days. So if I, if you would like me to list the specific ones, I'm happy to do that, but there were several that required sign postings. All of them met those requirements that were added by bill sixty-nine twenty-three, where those signs were posted for at least fourteen days, and the notice was on our website for at least fourteen days.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question for the staff before they leave? The administration?
Sure, go ahead.
Quick question, and, because this came up a couple of times when I was knocking on doors, because I want you all to say it, so it doesn't just come from me. If, if there is a, do you all do periodical reviews of the sign being there for fourteen days? Like, how is that done? Like, is there an inspector that drives past on day one and then on day fourteen, someone goes back and verifies again?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So the sign leaves our office generally with the property owner. They sign some paperwork that has instructions on how to post the sign, and then they've also been given information about the certification that they're going to need to sign. So we tell them, it's in your best interest to drive by the sign multiple times. It's March, it's windy, make sure the sign stays up, but we have no role in inspecting whether or not the sign, the signs remain up, are up, et cetera.
Who, could someone contest whether or not a sign was up fourteen days? Could a citizen contest that?
I'm not sure I can answer that question. I might defer to Mr. Swain from the Office of Law.
Right. These are self-verifying, so in other words, the person posting the sign gets the instructions. Once they've posted it, they sign a verification that it's been done, and there's pictures to verify that as well. So, and this is the same process that the Office of Planning and Zoning uses for subdivisions, they post a sign, same basic thing. I've not heard of one being contested.
Okay.
Someone could contest it, I suppose.
But it's certainly helpful to have the property owner onboard with the change. Otherwise, could the property owner, right.
Absolutely.
So if the property owner is not onboard with that change, it makes it hard for us as legislators to say, well, we're still going to, under the current process, before we change it on the fifteenth, if a property owner didn't want to post a sign on their property, even if we wanted to change it, could we still change that zoning?
You'd have to have permission to go on the property to post a sign.
Check. So, the reason I'm asking you, because I want the public to know that it's inherent that they participate in this process, because I can't, or none of us can just individually say, yes, we're going to change that under the current system that's in effect. We can't do it without that property owner's support, if you will.
That's correct. And one of the things we looked at earlier is properties with multiple owners, and requiring all the property owners to be on the application for a zoning change, not just one.
Check. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. I got to follow up, Mr. Swain. So, along the same line of thinking, sorry, this is a little hypothetical. If for some reason somebody posted the sign, and they did all the certifications, but then someone subsequently comes back and challenges that the sign was not actually there for the fourteen days, what impact does that have on the zoning change?
Well, by that point, it depends on when the person brings up their protest. So if they bring it up before the bill was voted on.
Sure.
That can be a factor. If they bring it up afterwards, they would have to probably go to court to try to turn that, turn that around. I mean, there is a presumption of validity with all legislation passed, but they'd have to have some pretty strong evidence. I'm sure you could bring a claim.
I'm not bringing a claim, I'm just curious.
Understood.
All right.
I'm sorry, because.
It's fine. Your meeting is much as mine. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
But on the fifteenth, when we amend the bill we approved last year to remove that notification piece, it's no longer an issue.
Right. And to be clear, the bill, I think it's twenty-six twenty-four, that is, what it does is it provides that if you are retaining the zoning as it exists today.
Correct. Yes.
From a change that's proposed.
Yes.
By the Office of Planning and Zoning, then the sign requirement is, it does not apply.
Got it. Understood. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Both bill six dash twenty-four as amended and bill seven dash twenty-four as amended will be heard on April fifteenth, 2024. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bill number eight dash twenty-four as amended and bill number nine dash twenty-four.
Bill number eight twenty-four, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Seven Plan. Bill number nine twenty-four, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Seven.
Thank you. Region Seven, these are administration bills. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me still at the table are Christina Pampa and Cindy Carrier from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We're happy to answer any questions on this bill, these bills.
Is there any discussion at this time? Seeing none, as we've done in previous meetings and we did earlier tonight, I will ask if anyone objects to, anyone, council member objects to a joint public hearing on bill eight dash twenty-four and bill number nine dash twenty-four, both related to Region Seven. We will now open the joint public hearing on bill number eight dash twenty-four and bill number nine dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, there were nine submissions through the online testimony tool. There were twelve submissions for bill number nine twenty-four made through that online testimony tool. Everyone here got a copy via an individual email. It is included, those are all included, I should say, in the summary that's posted online and will be added to the record. We also got an additional piece of testimony on bill eight twenty-four that was emailed to the, to Ms. Radveen's office, and that has been added to the testimony folder as well.
Thank you. We do have people signed up ahead of time. I'm going to call you in groups of six. Stacia Rosler, Gordon Rosler, Stephanie Schulman, Ann Myers, we have two sent up, Dorothy Guy and Nancy Guy. Please come up to the table, state your name and address. For the record, remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using the online testimony tool. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Stacia Rosler, eighteen seventy-eight Lindemore Drive in Annapolis. Properties at six seventeen and six twenty-three Ridgely have requested a C-two variance, which would increase allowable impermeable surface to eighty percent. I have sent to each of the council people here the Anarundal Arcus watershed maps showing that the higher elevation of those properties drains them directly into the Cove of Cork watershed. Our councilperson, Lisa Radveen, does not support such upzoning, and we ask that no other councilperson support it either. Similarly, there has been a request for a variance to small business designation for properties on Willow Road. Ms. Radveen does not support this request either. So Mr. Volkey took it upon himself to promote an amendment that is not within his own district. When asked by his own constituents why, he responded to them, that is because the properties on either side of those two are zoned small business, so those two should be as well. According to that logic, all of the properties surrounded by R-two zone parcels, which is most of the properties in the neighborhood, should also be zoned R-two if they're adjacent. But however, the impression one is given is that there is a move of foot to amass several contiguous small business parcels so that something like a town center or strip mall might be built there. I would like to remind the council that OPZ has stated that the aims of Plan 2040 can be fully met by existing zoning in other parts of the county without any upzoning in the Ridgely area, and that the cost of siltage damage to the Cove is unfairly borne by the residents of Lindemore, who are currently looking at a fifty thousand dollar dredging bill. Despite the opposition of nearly the entire neighborhood, Mr. Kraus persists in trying to turn Ridgely into his own personal profit center, and strangely, he and a couple of other landowners seem to receive more deference than do the voices of dozens of other citizens combined. We once again come before you to ask you to pass the proposed bill without any upzoning from what was promoted to the council by OPZ and the Planning Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosler?
Gordon Rosler, eighteen seventy-eight Lindemore Drive. Most of my thunder was stolen by a gentleman from Region Two. He said, you should listen to the stakeholder advisory commissions, except for Region Two. He said, you should listen to the Stakeholder Advisory Commissions, except for Region Two. He said, you should listen to the Planning Advisory Boards. So there is a process, this process that this council has mandated, and all of those recommendations were to reject the commercial and small business requests along the county. I just, I hope that those processes that we've gone through, and now there are very recent variance requests that have come up, that haven't gone through those processes, but those seem like they're making, making their way into this, into this bill. So I strongly urge that the, all of the commercial zoning along Ridgely be rejected. Thank you.
Ms. Schulman?
Hi. Hi, good evening, I'm back. I'm Steffi Schulman, I've lived in Lindemore for forty-three years. I'm here again tonight to reiterate what has been said by many members of the community, we do not want the zoning changes. The community is made up of many more than the four businessmen that own those sixteen properties. Again, many in the community are opposed to the zoning, and I taught bath for many years, and many is greater than four. We in the neighborhood, in the neighboring communities are again asking that you, our county council representatives, stand with us, the citizens, against this unnecessary commercial development along the Ridgely corridor. As a reminder, there is every form of business within a five-minute drive from the corner of Ridgely and Wilson. We are covered with every form of business, from birth in the hospitals to death at the two funeral parlors. There is not an additional business that is needed at that corner. While you, the county council members, and a variety of other committee persons have stated you stand with us on the status quo of Ridgely corridor, and have not made a decision, we have seen the hubris of these four businessmen. An old-growth tree has already been removed at the corner of Ridgely and Wilson. Surveyors, who I observed, were out there measuring and putting in stakes. A new sign has gone up for a childcare center, and a third sign for a variance at Willow is now up. We ask again, what is going on? What promises, or what thoughts of promises have been made to this Mr. Kraus and these other three businessmen, that they think that they can go ahead with this? We are citizens, we are your constituents, and we ask that you stand with us and support the fact that we oppose this kind of zoning change in our community. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Myers?
Hi, I'm Ann Myers, six oh six Dreams Landing Way. I concur with my neighbors from Lindemore. We are strongly opposed to any change in the development along the Ridgely Avenue corridor, and I have a list of all the names and addresses of the people that I'm representing in Dreams Landing, which is a community of fifty-six homeowners. The key issues, I think, are that we keep the amendments in place, because this cannot be upzoned to any kind of a village center, and secondly, that the overall digital zoning be addressed. I don't think that has been transparent at all, I think that's really the key thing, and that you can't upzone these residential properties to change that, you can't upzone it. I think what's really important is the issues that have been reiterated many times, the environmental issues, we don't have the infrastructure here for this, it's completely out of the character of the neighborhood, this doesn't have to become a dysfunctional place like so many other places have. Goodness. And that if indeed you do want to, as is your stated objective, to respect and protect the character of the community, leave the residential zoning alone, don't upzone it, and don't do any high-density development here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Guy?
This is Nancy Guy.
She said you.
I know, hold on, I don't have a mic. Okay, she wants you to go ahead.
Oh, okay. My name is Nancy Guy, six oh five North Bessgate Road. I strongly oppose Bill eight twenty-four and nine twenty-four for Ridgely Avenue, Williams Creek area, must be preserved and protected. We must protect the environment, our community, and our wildlife, for which you, the council members, represent. We do not need more commercial development that would destroy the natural landscape for our generation. Our tree canopy must be preserved and protected, et cetera, as it gives us means to survive through our sea life, waterways, and airways. The county cannot support its current water requirements for this area, as many residents report low water pressures at any given time. Development for the sake of a nail salon, dry cleaners, coffee shop, et cetera, is not warranted. Look at it realistically. It is not worth the destruction and costly expense of wildlife and human life. We have enough shops, restaurants, et cetera. You can see throughout, throughout the area, that a lot of the small businesses are closing up, because there are more online services. Our infrastructure, such as sewer, water, road, public safety, et cetera, do not support additional volume. I strongly oppose Bill eight twenty-four and nine twenty-four, and the landowners, developers, who are pursuing the upzoning for their own personal benefit, acquiring upzoning from R-two to SB, example for Willow's Road, is not warranted or needed in that area. There are plenty of unutilized commercial areas already in the county that should be utilized more, and those should be used rather than pursuing anything in our area. I also support Ruth J., Dorothy Guy, and Mary Guy's supports for this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Dorothy Guy?
Good evening, Dorothy Guy, six zero five North Bessgate Road. I support the amendments to Bill eight twenty-four to remove the Ridgely Avenue Village Center and Sector Plan. It's important that this council keep those amendments in place, as it takes its vote eventually on eight twenty-four. It's important that amendments are also in place to retain the residential zoning with no upzoning to either small business or commercial zoning for all of the properties in, along what you call the Ridgely Avenue corridor, and in the larger Williams Creek community neighborhood. This council should not allow applications for spot zoning, especially at this late stage of the game. This is a comprehensive zoning process in which the council is setting the zoning for the next several years. And by allowing spot zoning applications to come in at this point, you're essentially upsetting that whole comprehensive zoning process, and allowing developers to gain an upper hand over the individual citizens. And as you've heard tonight, there are many, many citizens in this area who oppose things like Mr. Volkey putting in an amendment to allow Mr. Kraus to upzone yet another of his properties. That's just wrong, Mr. Volkey. I hope you enjoy your thousand-dollar contribution from Mr. Kraus to your campaign. Revised versions of both the Region Seven Plan and the Digital Zoning Layer must be published before these bills are adopted, so that the citizens can see exactly what it is this council is adopting. You heard tonight, there were a lot of amendments made on the Region Two Plan and Digital Zoning Layer. We need to ensure that the Digital Zoning Layer here actually reflects the retainment of residential zoning and no upzoning to small business or commercial.
Thank you.
I'll end there, thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I have Ms. Kira Wheatley, Mary Guy. Let's keep decorum in the chambers, please, at all times. I have Kira Wheatley, Mary Guy, David Corddry, and Joe Lorenson. Ms. Guy?
Good evening, Mary Guy, six oh five North Bessgate Road. I'm here to clarify that I also oppose eight twenty-four and nine twenty-four, unless substantial amendments are included, as discussed, and no upzoning for any property to commercial or small business is enacted. I want to remind and instill in the county council and the Office of Planning and Zoning the importance, importance of conserve, preserve, and protect. The county has plenty of unused office space and has met its requirements for housing for the foreseeable future. The Ridgely Avenue, Williams Creek area cannot afford to be developed, given the detrimental impact that it would have on the area, and the far-reaching impact it would have on waterways, water supply in Anorundel County, traffic, et cetera. The ground slash area cannot be disturbed, has not been disturbed for many years, and does not need to be preserved now. I also want to remind the county that the need to conserve, protect, and preserve is representative of the overwhelming stance of residents, homeowners, taxpayers in the Ridgely Avenue, Williams Creek area, not just a few, as has been alleged. Contrary to what many may believe, the SAC, PAB, and OPZ for Region Seven did a horrific job of outreach and involvement of the community. I personally spoken with many of the residents, who said they never heard anything from the county about plans to change zoning, development, et cetera. It is wrong and not in keeping with due process that the OPZ held one meeting in the county and refused to hold any others in the community. The meager and very tiny print in the newspapers and one postcard was not conducive to the public participation either. The county cannot afford to allow a few real estate developers to monopolize the area and distance the county from the people it's supposed to serve and be responsive to. The legacy of this county council must be of preservation, conservation, and protection. Again, I want to echo, the county members should not be crossing regional boundaries when enacting amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Guy.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordry?
Yeah, hi, Dave Cordry, eighteen sixty-three Lindemore Drive, Annapolis. First, let me add my voice to the chorus of those opposed to increased density or change in development type along Ridgely Avenue, and to the many reasons that you've heard for that. I want to use my time to speak more about the means to that end. I was out of town and was not able to be here at the last meeting, so surprised when I watched the video to see Amendment Three, which struck the sector plan, passed with almost no discussion or debate. The community is in great agreement about what we don't want, however, the SAC process was not positioned to fully develop a positive vision for the, for the Ridgely Avenue area, and thus recommended a sector plan as a process to do so. This was based on extensive input and discussion over months. I have shared some thoughts about the sector plan in written testimony that I submitted to your March fourth meeting, I trust you all have seen that. I saw the sector plan as an offer of county resources and expertise to a process that has potential to reach a better outcome than just doing nothing. It would require work, for sure, but there are those who are willing to do it. Additionally, I feel it could lock in better outcome more reliably than doing nothing now, and just waiting to see what comes down the pike later. There is a risk in it of leaving the door open to the influence of those who want to profit at the community's expense through development. This is alarming to some, and you have heard that alarm. I do not question the sincerity of those who are skeptical of the process, or those on the council who have heard and responded to those voices. My counterpoint is only that if developing a sector plan leaves the door open, at least it's the front door, and we are all welcome to be, to mind the foyer and watch what goes on. If Mr. Kraus makes proposals via the front door, we will have an opportunity to engage and to push back. I actually like our chances at that in an open and above-board discussion. If we close that front door, who really believes he won't be poking around and others are poking around for a way in through the back door? I worry that that will be much harder for us to monitor, require vigilance for a much longer time. One of the speakers at the last meeting referenced that the back door has been away in the past for unfortunate things to happen. I prefer a method that would be open and transparent, I think a sector plan gives us that. So if this question of sector plan or not, or what's going to happen here is couched as a win-lose for the community versus the developers, Amendment Three is at best a win, small win for the community, and a temporary loss for the developers. I think a sector plan, if done well, offers a better opportunity for both. I hate to see this thoughtful work of the SAC tossed without due consideration, so I don't know if it's possible to revisit Amendment Three and to actually give it some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lorenson?
Is this working? Okay. Yeah, my name is Joe Lorenson. I'm a longtime resident of Lindemore, eighteen forty-seven Lindemore Drive. Previously submitted written testimony at the last meeting, I support the inputs of the many residents that's come before me and probably will come after me, and the OPZ recommendation, and Councilwoman Lisa Radvian's, for no change to the zoning, no upzoning to commercial. Commercial development's not needed here, it's not smart growth, as one developer will call it. And if you go to Ridgely corridor, we're only talking about a, maybe a half a mile, a third of a mile, it's bounded, it's nestled on three sides by limited disturbance areas, three sides, Lucy Creek, Cove of Cork, and Williams Creek. The tributaries that run directly into Cove of Cork, I personally contribute, some of my neighbors contribute, to the removal of the siltage and the water, stormwater runoff that runs directly into the Cove of Cork. It impacts our properties, it impacts our families, it is an area full of wildlife, teeming with it, you know, when you put the, the parking lots and the D canopy that's going to come from this, it's, it's going to ruin the characteristics in the areas that we raise in our kids. Let's not ruin the waters anymore, the Chesapeake Bay's already not meeting the Clean Water Act, we, we struggle keeping the Cove clean, we don't need any more parking lots and commercial development in an area that's really residential. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. That concludes the number of individuals that signed up in advance, is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? You may come forward, there are six seats. I'm going to start here, ma'am.
Hi, thank you.
State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Yes, I'd like to address the council, I'm Donna Ruttero Stern. I'm a resident here over two decades, I live in the Williams Creek area. I support all of my neighbors and everyone who's come before me in opposing this possible bill that would go to commercial, in our really beautiful area. So, the legislation for Bills eight twenty-four, eight twenty-four A, the General Development Plan, Region Seven, Bill nine twenty-four, Comprehensive Zoning, Region Seven, requiring your immediate action, excuse me, your immediate action to avoid irreparable harm to our residential community, and our waterways, and all of our wildlife. The Williams Creek Community, Ridgely Avenue area is where I am, and it's under attack by these, by these developers. We want the county, and we want your council, to enact changes to zoning regulations favoring the commercial uses, not protecting residential interests. We do not want that to happen. The combination of these actions destroys the residential character, treasured by the generations that have residence, that impacts our local waterways, Williams Creek, Loose Creek, and Severn, and the bay. This area is a neighborhood preservation area, and it must be preserved, protected, as my neighbors have also said, and conserved. I stand here, and I'm very upset and I'm very angry, that I come back here after traveling a year away, and I came back to this area to reside here for the rest of my life, because in the rest of this country, I did not find anywhere that was as lovely and beautiful as the Williams Creek area in which I reside. I had two houses here, one in Williams Creek and one in Reva Trace. I sold the one in Reva Trace because of the development that's happening over there. That Reva Road area is just horrific, and it's destroying the quality of Annapolis. The overdevelopment, the under-infrastructure, and the traffic problems that are going to happen over there, I don't want that to happen in my neighborhood, especially for the waterways and the nature that's in our side of Annapolis. Like everyone else has said before me, we have plenty of commercial opportunities for, for shopping, et cetera, we don't need anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Sir?
Thank you for giving me the time to talk to you. My name's Kevin Sullivan, I live at seven Cumberland Court, Annapolis, Maryland. I own several properties on Ridgely, on Ridgely Avenue, and have been in Ridgely Avenue since nineteen eighty-four. The neighborhood is not, it's already a commercial neighborhood. Every time I turn around, there's a new business in one of the homes. I hope that the council will do a more comprehensive approach to this. Everybody from Lindemore seems to think that it's going to affect them, it may, but they're a mile away from Ridgely Avenue. So, the Clove of Cork and, and all the waterways, Route fifty is a ten-lane highway behind one of my properties, where there's no sound barrier, where the woods were cut down, and the woods that are there, the owners of those forests have let vines grow up, and they're just killing the forest. So, they're not, they're not being taken care of, as people would like to speak about in front of you here today. In particular, on Old Riverview Avenue, which backs up to Route fifty, no sound barrier, no sound barriers on Row Boulevard, they took our property when they widened Row Boulevard, when the, the main way into Annapolis was given a couple of years ago. And the houses on the five hundred block that, that I have property on, there's five of them that haven't been lived in for thirty years. They go decades, and they're not, they're overgrown, they're trash-filled, the lawns and the yards, and people want to say, let's save Ridgely Avenue. We'd like you to save it in a comprehensive way. We see the tavern on, on Riverview Avenue, number one Riverview Avenue, just had, bought a, bought a parking lot.
Thank you, sir.
It was never a parking lot, it was all, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Melanie Arena, I reside at eighteen seventy-nine Loose Creek Drive. I'd like to thank all the council members, surely your job is difficult with having to organize all of this in your head, but I also have to agree with all of my neighbors, who I've come to know a lot, a lot better in the last few months because of all this. But, as, as many of you know, the critical area that we're all talking about, it's land within a thousand feet of Maryland's tidal waters and wetlands, it includes the bay, the Atlantic coastal bays and tributaries. The land Mr. Kraus intends to develop... The land Mr. Kraus intends to develop may not be 1,000 feet from the tidal waters, but it is within a half mile of Critical and the beloved areas of Loose Creek, Weems Creek, Cove of Cork. This is the community where we all live, all of Loose Creek Court, Loose Creek Drive, Franklin Road, Riverwatch Court, Dubois. This is all Critical area. His little stretch is a half a mile right in the middle of the Critical area. So as residents of Anarondale County, we have all felt this year's property tax increase, a tax that we all pay because we chose to live in this neighborhood that we love so much. We love it for the character, for all the many reasons that everyone has mentioned today. But this developer, well, it's more than one, but Ted Kraus seems to be the head guy. He's acquired several homes over the past few years and claims to want small business, but it seems odd that you would buy seven or eight properties just to have a bunch of small businesses. It really appears like the intentions are to have a larger commercial, which we really, really oppose. Mr. Kraus is an accountant. His work address is Stamford, Connecticut. It is not here in Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
My name is Owen Smith. I'm at 516 Riverview Court, and I want to thank all of you for your time. I know public service isn't easy any day, and I know that under the bright lights, it doesn't get any easier. I'm a fortunate homeowner. I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a caregiver for my in-laws, and I'd like to think I'm a good neighbor. Many of the people that you see here, including Judy and, you know, Kevin and others, we've met during the SAC process, and I adore them. It's the sense of community that the process has brought back, even though we've had contentious disagreements at times, has been beneficial to me, as someone who lives in the neighborhood. To give you a sense of exactly where I am, I'm at the antique store sort of between there and Heroes in Region Seven. You know, I'm a father like you. The difference is, is that I'm raising my family in the area that suddenly got your interest, and so I'd take, I'd ask you to take my testimony to heart as a father. Most relevant to all of you, I'm speaking to delay the vote on this until we have a little bit more time to sort out the language. We're dealing with the exact same problem that OPZ and PAB saw when they suggested the sector plan or other pieces. There is a lot of unfinished business with our community. We were divided by Route 50 generations ago, and now we've been divided by this process and what people do and don't believe. Part of that is because there's a vacuum about what's happening on the development front. At the last, at the PAB meeting, I took my opportunity, I was speaking just before Mr. Kraus, to say, "For all we know, it could be a high-rise casino." I would note that he did not specifically refute that. Now, I don't want to trade in rumors, but he had the opportunity, he wasn't paying attention, he already thinks it's a done deal. Number-one rule of parliamentary debate, as I'm sure you all did in high school, refute specific stuff like that, and he has not approached his community with decency and honesty in that regard. I am speaking here, you can hear I'm a little bit animated, I'm a little bit upset. I was unable to make the last couple of meetings, and I know there's a lot of stuff that happens outside of these meetings that I would have rather gotten ahead of that and can deal. Everybody here is magnanimous and generous one-on-one. I would appreciate if we delayed the vote on this specific issue too, because I love my neighbors, and I think that's the best for us.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. No, no, ma'am. You've already spoken today, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We've already heard from you tonight. This public hearing is now, sir? Oh, no, it's okay. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have good news and bad news, why is I am so happy so many of my neighbors came and told you how much it means to stop this steamroller that is really offensive to down in the depths of our hearts and souls. But I got some really bad news. Over the last couple of weeks, I have acquired new data. Last Thursday, before your Friday off, I was received wonderful help from an employee in Anarondale County Office of Planning and Zoning, or GIS, because I did ask for the zoning history of those properties on Ridgely Avenue, and you know where the signs are, folks. You've seen, you know, the health things, you know, where birthright was and so on, and you've seen the most recent one, the drizzle, potential daycare. And in these documents, from a prior document, I got information that there were three properties that were zoned small business in 2010, excuse me, 2009, through some general development plan, which was decided by, or which was based upon the GDP staff. And I think the term was jurisdiction, but I'm rusty on that because I've got, you know, there was other stuff. But there are four more properties that have become zoned small business. That gives you, three plus four is seven. That gives you seven businesses in a row, and the Office of Planning and Zoning informed me that this is kind of a, well, they didn't say it was a problem, they simply mentioned, and therefore, because it is directly across from the Weems Creek Medical Center, which is zoned commercial, it qualifies to be a small business district. Not small business parcel, but a district. What can you do in a district? Look at the laws we've been looking at lately. Multi-storied buildings?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I mean, it's really scary.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bills 8-24 and 9-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Bills, the titles of Bills 8-24 as amended and Bill Number 9-24.
Bill Number 824, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Seven Plan. Bill Number 924, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Seven.
Is there any further discussion at this time on Bill Number 824 as amended? Oh, Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I really just wanted to address some of the comments that I heard about housing. I heard one in particular saying that the current housing in the county is sufficient to address the needs of residents, and I just want to correct the record. It is absolutely not true. We have a massive housing shortage in the county. If you saw your property tax bill like I did, you might have felt some alarm, and it's not because we raised the property tax rates, it's because our values have all been assessed higher, and they're assessed higher because we have a housing shortage. That means the supply is not keeping up with the demand. So that is not to say that I am interested in doing anything to, anything other than what I've already said about the Ridgely Avenue corridor, but I also think we need to be realistic. There are people in this county that need housing, and they are our neighbors, they are living doubled up with family, they are couch surfing. We need to make sure that they have housing. Thank you.
May I get a motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 824 until April 2024, April 15, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill 824 until April 15, 2024.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. I'm sorry, Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 824 to April 15 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One to Bill Number 924.
Amendment Number One, this amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcel 0063 on Tax Map 051A, located at 134 Old Solomon's Island Road, Annapolis, from TC Town Center District to C4 Highway Commercial District.
This is Ms. Rodvian's amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. I think everyone in the room will be happy to know that this amendment has nothing to do with the Ridgely Avenue corridor, has nothing to do with Bay Ridge. It has everything to do, and pardon my sarcasm for a second, this amendment will allow a currently existing parking lot to become a parking lot. And I know that sounds odd and that it requires a zoning change, but it's really true. Right now, this is an employee parking lot, and it's a car dealership that would like to use it for car storage as well, for inventory storage. It is already a parking lot. It would simply become a parking lot. And so for that reason, I ask my colleagues' support.
Motion to adopt?
Oh, yes. Motion to adopt, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, for at least 14 days before this legislative session, were signs posted on the subject property, and was notice of the proposed change of zoning posted to the county council website.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, and I did receive a certification of sign posting that does certify and solemnly declare and affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that those signs were posted, that included pictures of the signs as well, and that notice was posted on the website for at least 14 days.
Thank you. Would the administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number One to Bill 924?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Just a couple of comments on this. The property is in the Pearl Town Center, and the planned land use that exists for the property currently is Town Center. The planned land use does not need to change if the zoning changes from Town Center to C4, which is Highway Commercial. And we do want to state that all the provisions of the Pearl Town Center overlay zoning as adopted in Bill 6423 would apply to the property, whether or not it's zoned Town Center or C4, but we offer no objection to this amendment.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number One to Bill Number 924? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Trivoki.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One to Bill Number 924 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 924 as amended will be heard on April 15, 2024. At this time, I'd like to ask a favor of my colleagues if we could take a seven-minute break. Thank you. The council will recess for seven minutes, and we will return at 9:32. All right, we're going to resume our meeting. This is why we don't take breaks. We're ready. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1424.
Bill Number 1424, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning Small Business Districts.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this bill previously at the work session and previous council meeting. This is a follow-up to a bill that passed but was not complete. This bill addresses some areas that were going to be introduced as amendments to that original bill, and I ask for my colleagues' support at the appropriate time.
The administration like to weigh in on this bill at this time?
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, thank you. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table is Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We appreciate the sponsor reaching out to us about this bill. We're fine with it, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion at this time on Bill 1424? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1424. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we received about seven submissions through the online testimony tool. Everyone here received a copy. They're included in the summary that is posted online, and they will be added to that meeting record.
Thank you. We did have people sign up ahead of time. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's returned, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. I have three individuals signed up ahead of time. If there's space here for three additional, if anyone else in the audience wishes to speak on this at this time, I would like to call up Dorothy Guy, Nancy Guy, and Mary Dorothy Guy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Dorothy Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. Basically, Bill 1424 doesn't go far enough. Bill 9223 was a crappy bill. This council introduced it right during the winter holidays. It adopted the bill very quickly. It did not give the public the chance to put any input into this bill. And what you've done here is allowed numerous inroads for developers to ruin residential areas through small businesses. You greatly expanded the types of small businesses that could basically infiltrate into a small-business zone property or small-business district and ruin the areas surrounding that. 1424 is supposed to be a corrective measure to 9223, but it's very limited in its scope, Ms. Fiedler, since 9223 was your bill originally. This is a crappy bill. You need to do more than this. You need to go back and rescind 9223 and start over again and give the public the chance to have actual input into the bill and take that into account. What this council is doing is bit by bit allowing developers to take over this county and develop every last square inch of this county. There will be no bare dirt, no tree left in this county in 20 years if you keep going at the pace that you're going with all these bills. It's horrible. This area is a loved area because of the natural resources here, and this council is doing everything it possibly can to destroy the entire natural environment in and around Annapolis. It's wrong. It's just absolutely dead wrong. Please, go back, rescind 9223 and start again.
Thank you. Nancy Guy?
Hi, my name is Nancy Guy, 605. Talking to your mic. Sorry. Hi, my name is Nancy Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I oppose this bill for it was not done to benefit its residents or to protect the community. It demoralizes individual ownership and the healthy lifestyles of each and every resident, both young, old children, and people with disabilities by advocating on behalf of business owners who want to utilize every piece of property to their benefit. It is not to our benefit. Increased signage, more lighting, more noise, more business districts, et cetera, are not beneficial to a quiet, peaceful, small community that should remain as such. We do not need or want to build a city within a small quaint part of Weems Creek, Ridgely Avenue, that has special characters and should always remain that way. I ask the county to vote against the bill to benefit its people, protect our land and its wildlife, do the right thing, oppose this bill. To amend this bill through the back door is a very sneaky way to do business with developers and should not be tolerated. I support Ruth Job's submission on March 31, as well as Dorothy Guy and Mary Guy's submissions as well, online and in testimony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Guy?
Thank you. Mary Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I also oppose this bill. The bill was not developed to benefit or protect the resident community and should not be passed. It degrades individual ownership and the healthy lifestyles of residents, meaning infants, children- infants, children, adults, older adults, people with disability, by advocating on behalf of business owners who, as was previously stated, want to utilize every inch of the property to their benefit. Increased signage, more lighting, more noise, more business districts, et cetera, are not beneficial to the community and its residents. Anterion County is not an urban area like New York City and DC and should not be treated as one. The county council has an opportunity to vote against the bill to benefit and protect the residents and visitors and must do so. Amending the bill on its back end is not efficient and in keeping with effective, efficient county government. Also, please stop the drones from trespassing and interfering with privacy, peace, quiet, and privacy. The 14-day posting of individual zoning requests, proposals, is inadequate. It does not allow for adequate public notice, comment, period, et cetera. People are just learning of the proposal consolidating and need to submit comments. It's all a mess, especially for people who aren't in the area, particularly people who are working, or snowbirds, or people who are affected by illness or family member conditions, et cetera. And then, just another point, Patrick Hughes had said before the county in the meetings that there is sufficient housing in Anterion County. The problem, however, really, in my mind, is how affordable is the housing. The cost of housing in Anterion County continue to go up, and the county council needs to address that. But, so, there are sufficient units, and you just have all the building now on Riva Road going in, as well as other areas, including in and around Fort Meade and these other areas where there's plenty of housing that's becoming available. Thank you.
Thank you. So, last call for Bill, public hearing for Bill 14-24. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill 14-24?
Thank you. I'll be brief. Matt Minahan, Chair of the Growth Action Network. Just big thanks to Councilwoman Fiedler for multiple whacks at this bill, staying with it, paring it down to a reasonable size, getting past the procedural issue that caused a lot of problems the first time, and I hope the council will adopt it. And this is really good legislative work, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 14-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 14-24.
Bill Number 1424, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Zoning Small Business Districts.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to touch on one comment that came during our last hearing on this bill and has been brought up in emails since, and that is noise and the potential for noise. There was a request to add noise restrictions for the small business district in this bill, but that would be an entirely separate matter that is more appropriate to be considered under the noise ordinance bill. And I think that there are obviously challenges when you start making distinctions between noise ordinances in individual zones. So, that's a conversation that we can certainly have, but I did not bring forward an amendment this evening for that reason.
Is there any further discussion on Bill Number 14-24 at this time? Madam Secretary, please read the title, and then we'll probably be ready for the roll call. Did I already ask you to read the title?
I'm happy to read the title again. Bill Number 1424, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Zoning Small Business Districts.
Seeing no lights, I think my colleagues are ready to vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 14-24. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volki.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1424 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 16-24.
Bill Number 1624, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning: Uses Food Service Facilities, Outdoor Seating Related to Food and Beverage Service.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration. With me at the table, I have Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We did discuss this bill at the work session a couple weeks ago. The purpose of this is to allow certain sued food service facilities to continue to utilize outdoor seating related to food and beverage services. You'll remember, we had discussed outdoor dining, I think, back in December or January, and we had a bill that expires June 1. So, this bill is the follow-up to that. What it does is it makes permanent the outdoor dining for those restaurants that have been in continuous use of it since at least March 21, I believe, 2021. Restaurant owners would have to certify to the Office of Planning and Zoning within 90 days of the effective date of the bill that they would have been in continuous compliance since the start of the initial emergency orders. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Is there any discussion on Bill 16-24 at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 16-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, we received about 10 submissions through the online testimony tool. Everyone here got a copy. They are included in that summary that's posted online and will be added to the meeting record.
Thank you. We did have two individuals sign up ahead of time. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. I have Ms. Catherine Taylor and Ms. Mary Guy signed up to speak. With that said, there are four additional seats. If anyone in the audience chooses to testify, come on up. Ms. Taylor, you have the floor.
Catherine Vieux-Taylor, Pasadena. I'm continuing a theme, it seems, tonight, of residents who are concerned about commercial development and the impact of commercial development on their homes and their lives. So, while I appreciate that this bill is significantly more narrow than 8523 was, in that it has to apply only to outdoor seedings or restaurants and bars that have been continuously in operation and are otherwise compliant, and also extremely grateful that it excludes a sort of backdoor way for grandfathered facilities to gain the ability to expand beyond that otherwise allowed in the code while they appreciate that. I remain concerned that essentially, I don't see why we need this bill at all. We have a process by which restaurants and bars can request site-specific review. I think it would be better to return to that, allow Bill 8523 to lapse, don't pass this bill. However, if this bill is going to pass, then I very much support the amendment whereby residents who are within 100 feet of these, essentially, facilities within 100 feet of residentially zoned property, would be excluded. If you have ever had an outdoor bar pop up near your home, as I have, as a result of COVID, you know it is a life-altering event in your home. It is also were to be made permanent, destructive of property value, and just generally a really horrible thing to have happen to you, and I don't want that to happen to anyone in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Guy?
Mary Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I echo the comments of the prior speaker. I also have concerns by what this means for use of sidewalks and public space that was allowed during COVID. Restaurant owners self-certify. That's an interesting thing to do. Hopefully, they'll be in good shape with that. Just like, as was previously mentioned, the noise, the lighting, et cetera, all of these pose significant public health issues. And for specifics related to the public health issues, you can refer to the journals that talk about quality of life, the ability to rest, to sleep, et cetera. My neighbor yesterday had a huge party for the Easter celebration and went until about 10 o'clock last night, and I can assure you it was very disruptive to my neighbor, the neighborhood, parking on the street, et cetera, et cetera. So, I ask the council to please take all those things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nancy Guy?
Yes, my name is Nancy Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I oppose this bill for our residents and community do not need or want their lifestyles invaded by XX noise, music, et cetera, especially after 8:00 p.m. at night. Hearing drums and music into the night is not good for the elderly or disabled welfare, for the children who need to get up to school for school the next day. Not only that, if you serve beverages late at night, you're more susceptible to having drunk drivers out on the road at all hours of the night. So, I ask the county council to please oppose this bill, and also to please protect our wildlife as well, because, as you know, at night, deer run at night, and people who are drinking more at night would have less driving ability then, and we also need to, again, protect our wildlife. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. The public hearing on Bill Number 16-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 16-24.
Bill Number 1624, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning: Uses Food Service Facilities, Outdoor Seating Related to Food and Beverage Service.
There is one amendment on this bill. Is there any discussion before we go into amendments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
This amendment prohibits the continued use of outdoor dining at food service facilities that are less than 100 feet from residentially zoned properties.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, I think, overall, both restaurant owners and patrons were very pleased with the outcome of outdoor dining. I certainly know that outdoor dining was something that I really enjoyed during COVID, and I'm glad, I live in the city of Annapolis, so we're, you know, we are under slightly different rules, but a lot of it has continued, and I think people really love it. However, folks that haven't loved it have made their voices clear, and they are the individuals and households who are within 100 feet of establishments that have outdoor dining. And so, this amendment basically just prohibits the continued use of the outdoor seating at food service facilities, aka restaurants, that are less than 100 feet from residentially zoned properties. So, I ask for my colleagues' support. Hopefully, this is a reasonable compromise. Oh, I move the amendment.
Is there any discussion? Would the administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number One?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I just want to make sure I confirm that I'm reading this correctly. So, this would prohibit it if it's at least 100 feet from a residentially zoned property. And this is for just the food service facilities that are operating under the original executive orders and subsequent bills, not for new applications that come in for outdoor dining and for, under the normal process that we utilize. Right, like, if you have a new restaurant that you're opening up and you're part of that application, or your site development plan, correct?
I'm actually going to defer to Office of Law and make sure that's correct, because I don't know, I actually don't know that it reads that way. I think the idea is that if it wasn't good during COVID, we wouldn't want it going forward.
Greg Swain, no, I would agree that the way this is written with the amendment will apply to these. More or less.
Okay, so, if that were something we wanted to look at more broadly, or, let me ask you a further question, then. So, a restaurant that had, you know, operated during COVID, but, you know, with this amendment would not be allowed to operate their outdoor seating, you know, under the sort of grandfathering, I guess this whole thing is really a grandfathering bill?
Basically.
Is that, okay. So, could that restaurant, in theory, go back and apply?
Yes.
Through a new process? So, if we wanted to sort of cut that off, we would maybe need a second bill, and, you know, that's something I'm happy to discuss with folks. But that would need to be a separate piece of legislation.
We'd also have to consider existing uses that are, because there are some of these types of facilities in residential neighborhoods who are non-conforming currently as far as zoning goes. So, we could do that in a separate bill.
Okay. And I think those are probably a little bit more comfortable, because if they were already there and they've been there for a long period of time, you know, people know what they're getting into. I always like to joke that, hey, I live across the street from Navy Stadium. I know exactly what I was getting into when we bought our house. So, I think those, you know, there's a little bit more reasonableness there, because people knew they were, you know, they hopefully knew that, hey, there's a restaurant that I drove past to get to my house. So, anyway, this would basically just cut off the restaurants that are within 100 feet that were grandfathered under the COVID special rules. Mr. Volki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Swain, because this is probably a question for you, but anybody else can answer. This bill looks like it is referring to food service facilities as defined in the Health General Article, and that is what we are allowing to continue to operate outdoor dining. Is a food service facility, under the Health General Article, the same as a bar, or a tavern, or another entity that is operating with a liquor license?
A food service facility, as defined, would include all of those.
Okay, all right. And then, my next question is, do we know, and this might be for you, Ms. Miller, do we know how many places are currently still using this outdoor seating? We had talked about this back in January, and I think at that point, planning and zoning wasn't really sure. Do we now have a better sense of that? I assume these people had to submit applications at some point to do the outdoor dining. Did we track that during COVID?
Lynn Miller, planning and zoning, no. Unfortunately, we don't have a number of people, of food establishments that took advantage of this, and that's, I guess, primarily because when the emergency ordinance was passed, there was no temporary use approval required from OPC. So, there was not any kind of tracking mechanism put in place.
Okay. So, we don't know how many outdoors dining facilities that may be operating are going to be impacted by this if we pass this amendment?
We don't know. We did get a list from the Department of Inspections and Permits of people that had come in for either a tent permit or a permit to put in some kind of structure that would separate the dining area from, say, a parking area. But, we have no way to know that that's a, you know, complete list, because others could have initiated the outdoor dining without a tent or without anything that would have required a permit.
Okay. So, if they did initiate, and you do have that information, are you aware, based on the list that you do have, how many entities would be impacted by this particular amendment?
The list that we got from the Department of Inspections and Permits is, I think, less than 30, maybe 20.
In total on the list?
Yes.
Okay. And then, of those 20, 30, however many there are, do you know how many of those are within 100 feet of a residentially zoned property?
No.
If you don't, that's all right.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
And just, oh, thank you, Madam Chair. And this would be complaint-driven, right? So, you would actually, we, let's say this passed, for those entities that are in violation, the only way the county would be made aware of that is if someone complained about it, to drive the, is complaint-driven? Or are you going to go to all 30 of these and do a site visit and inspect?
Well...
There's an application process in the bill. So, anyone who wants to extend it pursuant to this bill would need to have an application, a verification, that they've been operating continuously, that sort of thing. So, we would have, at that time, we wouldn't know.
You know, okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Fiedler. Thank you, Madam Chair. Of the 20 or 30 businesses that this could impact, this amendment could impact, do you know if there have been any zoning complaints, even though they may not fall under enforcement, because they are able to exist within that 100 feet right now? Have there been, to your knowledge or recollection, if you don't know, that's, you know, this is on-the-spot question?
I can only think of one or two zoning enforcement cases that have been initiated over the last couple of years that related specifically to outdoor dining. And even then, I'm not sure if they were outdoor dining. And even then, I'm not sure if they were outdoor dining that was initiated under the emergency ordinance. I think one of them had been there for some time, so.
Okay.
I guess the short answer is, I'm not aware that we've had a lot of complaints at all about outdoor dining that was enacted under the emergency ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I also just wanted to, actually, I just thought of this while you were asking your question, Councilmember Fiedler, is that there also could be complaints that went through the police department or, you know, surrounding noise complaints. So it's entirely possible that there are other complaints that didn't, you know, make it, they weren't zoning enforcement cases, they were police, you know, noise cases. There was something else I was going to say, but I forgot, so I'll come back to it when I remember.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure this reads the way I'm imagining it, understanding it in my mind. So when we say less than 100 feet from residentially zoned properties, that means literally from lot line to lot line, regardless of how far away the residence might be. Because I'm just, I'm thinking of my district where I, in some cases, a parcel could be significantly sized, and so a residence could actually be well over 100 feet away, but the lot lines may abut. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding that application properly.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Lynn Miller, planning and zoning, the way we would typically measure something like this is when this establishment submits the required application upon the effective date of this bill, they'll have to include what we'd call an administrative site plan, which is not a full site development plan. But on that, they would need to show the location of structures as well as the outdoor dining area. And so we would measure the 100-foot distance from the edge of that area to the nearest residential property line.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Are there currently any enforcement cases that you have in zoning enforcement that relate to the legislation, well, I'd strike that, to the emergency ordinance that gave these authority for outdoor dining that was then extended by 8523?
I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
Well, I can say I'm not aware of any coming through the Office of Law.
Okay. And are you, has there been any bar or any preclusion for either law or zoning enforcement to take action against any entity, food service entity, because of the granting of authority under 8523 or its predecessors? The reason I'm asking is, I have heard informally that basically if somewhere is operating outside and they're doing outdoor dining, that the Office of Law and Planning and Zoning and Inspections and Permits, everybody's sort of turning a blind eye and saying, we can't do anything about this, because that's authorized under these emergency ordinance powers, and there is no enforcement that can be done. So we can't touch them, we can't do anything. That's what I have heard informally. So is that the policy of the administration? Is that the policy of law, planning and zoning? And obviously, you can't speak for IMP, but you might know for IMP.
Well, I can speak to law, and that's not, certainly not a policy we have in law.
Okay.
Complaints aren't coming to us, though. We're getting them after they've already been screened or by IMP or whoever it's coming into. And I'm not talking about noise complaints. I'm talking about that type of complaint.
Yeah, right, right. Actually, like, a use that is not an allowable use of some sort. I don't want to say non-permitted, because clearly there was no permit, but, okay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I also just want to clarify, not related to this amendment, but the bill more generally would allow planning and zoning to have an idea, that you'd actually have an exact number of how many restaurants were using this. So we'd get that information pretty quickly. And you would, it would also allow, like you said, with the, what did you, administrative site plan would allow a sort of a check to make sure that their outdoor seating area was 100 feet from the nearest residential lot line. So it actually helps put a couple more checks in place. Okay, you're confirming, so thank you.
Correct, yes.
And actually, just on a side note, I want to thank Ms. Miller and Ms. Beach for their help writing this amendment, because it was a little harder than it might look.
Any further discussion on Amendment Number One? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Neigh.
And Ms. Pickard.
Neigh.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Bill Number 16-24 will be heard, as amended, will be heard on April 15, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 17-24.
Bill Number 1724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Adult Independent Dwelling Units.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know I'm a little late to the party. Could I be added as a cosponsor of this bill?
Oh.
So noted, thank you. Thank you.
This is an administration bill. You have the floor, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. So this bill comes out of a bill that was passed a couple of years ago, I believe it was 3021. Too much paper. Yep, 3021. The purpose is to modify the definition of adult independent dwelling unit, clarify the allowed use of adult independent dwelling units in certain residential districts, and add multifamily dwellings and townhome dwellings as conditional uses in certain residential districts. So this is really about amending the bulk regulations to reflect the changes that were made through Bill 3021, and it's not making anything substantive, any substantive alterations to the code. It's just updating the bulk regs. And we're happy to answer any questions. And I know we have an administration amendment. We're happy to discuss at the appropriate time.
Madam Chair. Yes, I am so sorry, and this is really embarrassing. I thought we were on 19, so I guess I'm happy to leave my cosponsorship here. But I'll let admin go it alone. I'm so sorry.
It's past slot of bedtimes. So just for the record, I'm not putting your name on Bill 1724.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So sorry.
Does anybody have any questions about Bill 1724 at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 17-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to speak on this bill. If there's anyone here in attendance who would like to come to the table and have a seat, when it's your turn, you can state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 17-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 17-24.
Bill Number 1724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Adult Independent Dwelling Units.
There is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment provides for a 50-foot setback for certain townhouse structures adjacent to a lot in the same zoning district.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is exactly what it does. Couldn't be simpler.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Rodvian, so moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Hummer for the second. Is there any discussion on Amendment Number One? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Bill Number 17-24 will, as amended, will be heard again on April 15, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 18-24.
Bill Number 1824, An Ordnance Concerning Board of Appeals Compensation Per diem Allowance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is actually my bill. I believe it has been cosponsored by numerous of my colleagues. This bill relates to compensation per diem allowance. This bill increased the per diem allowance from $75 per day to $125 per day for our Board of Appeals commissioners. The BOA per diem has not changed in the last 17 years. This adjustment was reflected in the FY 24 budget. I welcome discussion on this bill and ask for the support of the council. The administration have anything to say on Bill 1824?
Happy to answer any questions if we can.
Any discussion of my colleagues at this time? We will now open the public hearing on Bill 18-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, there was one submission. Everyone here got that in an email. It is included in the summary that's posted online and will be added to the meeting record.
I don't have anyone signed up at this time. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on Bill 1824? Seeing no movement in the audience, I will now close the public hearing on Bill 1824. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 18-24.
Bill Number 1824, An Ordnance Concerning Board of Appeals Compensation Per diem Allowance.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, over the last 2012 that I've been involved and worked with the Board of Appeals, they have done, carried way more weight than what we, the county, has sort of allocated to them. So kudos to them for being basically citizen servants, because they're essentially doing the job for free. Because the money we do give them is probably just paying for gas. So, you know, I'm hopeful that we all can come through for them on this one. But I 100% understand the workload they have. Since COVID, they've tried to eradicate that backlog that they've had and have hopefully, you know, tried to achieve that. But they are really a good asset that we have here, and I have zero issues with helping them be a little bit more comfortable with all the work that they do perform for this county. So that's it.
Any other discussion on Bill 1824? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 18-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1824 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 19-24.
Bill Number 1924, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Workforce Housing.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is also my bill.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rodvian.
I would like to be added as a cosponsor to 1924, and if it's okay or convenient now, also 20-24.
This is a great time to cosponsor Bill 19-24, if anyone else wants to do that at this time. Okay. With that in mind, this, this bill is a companion to 8223 that we passed with bipartisan support in the winter. The current workforce housing code has been very successful in kickstarting projects around the county that serve the population that make up to 80% AMI for homeownership and up to 60% average median income for renters. We've heard from our partners like ACDS that it can be difficult to find land to cite workforce housing. This bill expands our successful workforce housing program by allowing workforce housing projects to locate in an R5 or R10 zone parcel. However, if the parcel is not located on a collector or higher road, the maximum density allowed is reduced from the typical workforce housing density of 22 units per acre. In proportion to the type of zoning and lesser road classification, these parcels, if zoned R5, are limited to 10 units per acre, and R10 parcels are limited to 15 units per acre. The requirement for public water and sewer remain. I welcome discussion on this bill and ask for the support of my colleagues. Would the administration like to weigh in on workforce housing at this time? Before you do, I will thank you for your eager support. I believe you've cosponsored this bill and the collaboration to get it to this point. I appreciate you in every way imaginable as we look to build more diversity in our housing and starter homes. This could reinvigorate building starter homes in Anarundel County for our very deserving essential workers. So now you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Jansen Evelyn, our DCAO for land use, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. You took a lot of my comments, but that was what I was going to say, was we are a cosponsor of this bill. We really appreciate the collaboration and all the work that went into this in crafting this housing policy, and look forward to continued collaboration on this important issue.
Fantastic. Are there any, any further discussion before I open the public hearing on Bill 19-24? I don't want to get off track on my own bill here. All right, seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 19-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, there was one submission. Everyone here got that in an email. It's included in the summary that's posted online, and it will be added to the meeting record.
Thank you. We have had, we have not had anyone sign up ahead of time. If there are folks in the audience that are interested in testifying at this time on Bill 1924, you may come up at this time, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool.
Thank you, Madam Chair and council. Matt Minahan from the Growth Action Network. We believe strongly in the need for workforce housing in the county. We were very happy to see this bill submitted. We think there are some nips and tucks that the bill could benefit from, but by and large, we support the effort. We're appreciative of the county executives' support for this and the council's support for this. And we hope that, as you've said, it jumpstarts the county's attempt to create moderately priced housing and particularly starter homes for both purchase and for rental. Thank you.
Ma'am.
My name is Susan Gross. I live at 175 South Southwood Avenue here in Annapolis. And I'm a member of Anarundel Connecting Together, and we support this bill. There was one part that I don't think we've said before, and it is that I was part of the education research team and one of the things we discovered that the public school system was having challenges.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 19-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 19-24.
Bill Number 1924, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Workforce Housing.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 19-24 at this time? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, if, without this bill, if a development only has vehicular access to. to a road less, or under a collector road determination, it is not permitted prior to this bill.
Correct. Workforce housing, that is correct. Our current workforce housing policy is contingent on being a higher classified road in R5 and R10.
Okay.
Am I stating that right? Ms. Miller?
Yes, Madam Chair.
It's been a long night.
Okay.
Okay. This is a historic moment. I'm very excited about this bill. I, seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 19-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, Bill number 1924 has been passed.
Just a point of personal privilege. I did just get an important text. UConn is tied at the half. It's very important, women's NAACP, okay. NCAA tournament, this is very important. I have a lot of family competition going right now. UConn USC tied at the half at 33. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 20-24.
Bill number 2024, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning: Mixed Use Districts: Requirements for Conditional Uses BWI Fort Meade Growth Area, Multifamily Residential Uses.
This again is my bill. This is also a good time to co-sponsor Bill 20-24 if anybody wants to do that. You've already done that, yeah. Yep, yep. So this is also a bill focused on implementing the GDP Plan 2040 and to an extent now region plans. We know our current mixed use zoning categories are not meeting market demands. Bill 2024 provides a market-driven solution to this mapped area of the BWI Fort Meade Growth Area. The name itself says it all. It names two of our biggest employers in the county, and it was identified as a growth area. And then we are, as it's been discussed over and over again, we, like the nation, are in a housing crisis. The current code mandates projects to provide a certain percentage of commercial development, which we have discovered is just unworkable. In this mapped area for C3 and mixed zone properties, this bill will allow projects to replace the commercial component with residential development up to a higher density. For this trade-off, there is a requirement that 10% of the units be set aside for households with an income not exceeding 80% AMI. This bill applies development concepts such as MPDUs and density targets already present in the code in other growth areas such as the Odenton Town Center and the Parole Town Center. I have shared mapping tools with my colleagues who have overlap with this area and their district. Bill 2024 aligns with the development goals in Plan 2040. I welcome discussion on this bill and ask for the support of the council. Would the administration like to comment at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table again are Jansen Evelyn, our deputy CAO for Land Use, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. I do agree with the sponsor and we appreciate the collaboration and discussion that has gone on in developing this bill. We agree and are fully aware that our nation and our county are in the middle of an affordable housing crisis and that this is a good policy to address that. I know we disagree on the set aside for affordability. The administration has always been consistent in that we believe a 15% set aside requirement is best to help our workforce and that it will not drive developers out of Anarundel County. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion at this time of Bill 2024 before we open the public hearing? There are two amendments this evening. Seeing no discussion at this time, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 20-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, there was one submission. Everyone here received that in an email. It is included in the testimony summary that's posted online and will be added to the meeting record.
There was no one signed up ahead of time to testify on Bill 20-24. If there's anyone here in the audience that would like to testify on Bill 2024, please come forward at this time.
Thank you again for the work on this. We want to appreciate the sponsors' work in helping us understand the bill, appreciating the back and forth that we've had with the sponsor to help us be clearer about the intentions of the bill and to sort out some of the questions and the confusion we had with the bill. We think by and large this is a very good start, and we agree that 15% would have been a better number and still believe that the need is great and 15% should be a minimum, not a maximum. Thank you.
Sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the county council. I am speaking tonight in support of Bill 2024. As a partner at Atman Holdings, our family has enjoyed a long, successful relationship developing and operating residential and commercial properties in Anarundel County for four generations. We have experienced changes over time and the need for various commercial, institutional, and residential uses as markets evolve. Bill 2024 provides much-needed flexibility in C3 and MXD zoning districts within the BWI Fort Meade Growth Area to allow development to better meet market needs. This is important near BWI Airport, Fort Meade, and NSA, where employment expansion, much of it tied to our collective national security, drives the need for high-quality housing close to jobs. Specifically, this bill will enable us to expand multifamily housing in future phases of our Sandy Farms property located at Route 100 and Telegraph Road. Under our existing C3 zoning regulations, any future development of the remaining vacant property would have to be retail and commercial square footage. The unique attributes and characteristics of this property make commercial uses nonfeasible. Bill 2024 provides us with the flexibility to build additional multifamily housing, a use that is in great demand to support this important employment area for the county. I want to thank chairperson Addison Pickard for her leadership in bringing this legislation forward and want to greatly appreciate everyone's consideration and support for this bill. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, David Plot with YVS Law, 185 Admiral Cochran Drive in Annapolis. And I'm here to support Bill 2024. I do represent Atman Properties Company, and Jonathan was just explaining the facility that they have. The problem with the zoning, the C3 zoning, is that you have this commercial requirement for floor areas. So for the 400,000 square feet where they've built apartments on half of the property that's already been cleared, prepared for development, they would have to build 400,000 square feet of commercial retail. And it doesn't make sense because what we need is housing to support the base. And this is, you know, the critical mission of the base and the alphabet soup of agencies that are out there. People need to live close to their jobs so they don't have to be, you know, driving long distances and crowding the roads and lowering the stress for the employees. So the bill makes a lot of sense. Really appreciate Chairman Pickard and also Councilwoman Rodvian for cosponsoring the bill. I know there's going to be an amendment with respect to clarification as to the density limitation that it applies to the entire site. We'd ask that you support that. Mr. Hunt made a statement that the administration has always pushed for 15% for the MPDU requirement. But I would just call to your attention that in Councilwoman Rodvian's district, the parole bill, that had a 10% affordable requirement. And we would ask that you not support an amendment to increase the affordable requirement. We believe that 10% is reasonable. It will facilitate development of affordable housing. 15% is not what is required in the parole district, which was an administration bill. So we would ask that you not support an amendment to increase that to 15%. Otherwise, I think that this is a wonderful piece of legislation that will facilitate additional housing and meeting the critical needs of the county. So thank you for supporting.
Thank you. Sir?
Evan Pickett, 2410 Evergreen Road, Suite 105, Gammels, Maryland, 21054. Madam Chairman, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening in support of Bill 2024. As I believe everyone is aware, housing availability and affordability remains a challenge in Anarundel County and regionally. Despite interest rates hitting 40-year highs, home sale and rent prices continue to increase as our country continues to grapple with inflation. Why is this? Available inventory. Simply put, there's too much demand for housing and not enough available units. And should interest rates begin to be cut by the Federal Reserve in the coming months, this problem will only get worse as new buyers will flood the market. Bill 2024 adds a much-needed tool in the county code, which would allow the county to supplement within an overlay which has been targeted for growth, additional residential density in lieu of unneeded commercial square footage, especially given that commercial square footage is in ample supply within the BWI Fort Meade Growth overlay. I also think it's important to point out that this bill is designed to provide optionality and allow for replacement of commercial square footage with residential square footage, not simply more square footage than what is otherwise allowed. When the C3 and MXD zones, along with the bounds of the zoning code, were updated in 2005, was updated in a way to reflect the 2005 marketplace, which is now a world away from the 2024 marketplace. We are now at a time where demand for residential grossly outweighs demand for commercial and office. Bill 2024 addresses this monumental shift while still holding true to a targeted, limited geographic area. In closing, and I know you've heard this countless times, the county code is a living, breathing thing which requires constant attention in order to address the needs of people it serves. Bill 2024 is perhaps the most important example of that. In Anarundel County, residents need housing, period. They don't need more retail space. They don't need more office space. Bill 2024 takes an antiquated provision in what are considered the county's most flexible and robust zoning districts and tweaks them within this limited geographic area in order to address an immediate need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for staying within your two-minute limit at this time of the night. If there's anyone, is the last call for public testimony on Bill 2024? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 2024 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 2024.
Bill number 2024, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning: Mixed Use Districts: Requirements for Conditional Uses BWI Fort Meade Growth Area, Multifamily Residential Uses.
Before we start amendments, is there any discussion on this bill? I would, I'm just going to make one comment regarding some of the testimony. Again, I appreciate the hard work of all involved to get this bill to this point. I would, in reference to, and we'll talk about it in a moment, well, we'll just talk about it in a moment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Just had to bring it up. Amendment number one. This amendment clarifies that the density for additional multifamily dwellings in certain circumstances is limited to 44 dwelling units per acre for the site.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is my amendment, although this is my amendment based on lots of discussion with the administration and making sure that it is clear. The language of the bill is clear. So while I personally felt it was clear, we are moving forward with this simple amendment to guarantee that it is clear for all who need to interact with this bill. Motion to adopt.
Rodvian, second.
The administration like to comment?
We would urge the council to support this amendment.
Is there any questions regarding amendment number one?
No questions in reference to amendments, but I do want to point out this bill as a whole. I did forward this to a Region One team here earlier, and my goal was certainly to make sure that I get input from them because a large portion of the map that covers this district or this overlay is in District One. And so since they were in the process of literally dissecting each parcel by parcel, I wanted them to be aware. So I will be waiting on feedback from them. Obviously, we're going to amend it, but I'm just sort of putting it out there because I do want to get that feedback from the Region One team. So I'm just putting it right there. That's it. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment reduces the capital facility connection charge for certain MPDUs and increases the percentage of dwelling units required to be set aside for certain income levels.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. So it pretty much does exactly what Madam Secretary just said, but to be more specific, it raises the percentage of MPDUs required from 10% to 15%. I know there's been a lot of discussion, and so we can continue it right here and now. Move to adopt.
Is there a second? Does the administration have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure it will come, it's no surprise to anyone that we are supportive of this amendment because we've always believed that 15% is the proper threshold to set aside affordable units for our essential workforce while also providing incentives such as the 50% reduction from capital connection charges. So we would urge the council to adopt this amendment.
So I want to just clarify. The bill was drafted with a 10% threshold for MPDUs based on pretty much mirroring what happened, what is policy in the parole town center as well as with the density, intensity of both the parole town center and the Odenton Town Center. We are in the process of engaging in a very detailed and lengthy work group regarding countywide moderately priced dwelling program. And neither the parole town center nor this growth area, well, they will both, potentially, a new countywide bill would supersede these two MPDU policies. But what hasn't happened, as I drafted this, we did not put forth a really robust MPDU program, trying to keep it simple, like in the parole town center, for a reason. It is a mapped area, very narrow in scope. I would prefer to keep it at 10% while the work group continues. And then if we are going to land on a higher threshold for a countywide policy, we will then be able to take the benefits or the other development incentives into consideration when going to that higher threshold. That is why the bill was drafted as it appears today. So I just wanted to give some rationale to that, and those are my comments. Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I echo what Ms. Pickard said. We have been working diligently, along with the administration, to craft a countywide MPDU bill. And we've made a lot of progress that I think it's going to be a good bill that will, has the potential to really make a difference in our housing issues in the county. I think it's premature to do a section of the county at this higher percentage rate until we have the other in place. I also believe that we should stick with the 10% that we have at parole. And when that other bill comes, if at that time we've all reached consensus on a higher percentage, this can then be all grandfathered in under that. But at this time, I would not support raising it to 15%.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. Since parole town center is in my district and it's come up, I actually just wanted to say, I think there was some strategy in choosing the 10% because that really was the council's first toe in the water with respect to MPDUs. So there wasn't necessarily an idea that that should set a precedent for. necessarily an idea that that should set a precedent for the county, but rather make sure that we didn't somehow undercut the entire bill. So I certainly understand my colleagues', you know, desire for consistency, but I just wanted to share that comment that it was not intended. Honestly, I would have probably gone with 15, but, you know, you want to make sure your bills pass.
Mr. Smith.
Does the sponsor have a desire to change the 10% to 50% in those town centers or in the Annapolis Town Center? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Rodvian.
That is certainly something I would be willing to discuss, yes.
I drafted the bill with the help of, with the coordination and collaboration with the administration, fixing some pretty serious issues regarding mixed use. I remain committed to doing the good work of our MPDU work group. We, as we look at MPDU programs across the state, we know that 12.5 is the highest MPDU program across the state in Frederick County with considerable, considerable development incentives to get to that. So I think, like Ms. Hammer said, I think this is just premature to go to what would be one of the highest MPDU. What folks need to understand about moderately priced dwelling units is that is all creating affordability in the market. There's no government subsidy. There's no tax credits. So it's a very unique and narrowly tailored program that also provides affordability to a subset of the population, those who are in need of housing in the 80% to 100% average median income. We have a housing crisis. We do indeed. And when we, as a body and as a county, come to a coordinated countywide MPDU program, it'll be a good day. But I will tell you, even after we pass a good impactful MPDU policy, we have tremendous work to do for those of residents in this county that are the hardest to house. So it won't be a big victory lap for me. It'll be what's next. This is one tool in the toolbox in a targeted area, and I would just, I would encourage my colleagues to not only consider the 10%, but also consider the impact of this very narrowly small scoped bill and support these efforts. Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I can't remember who seconded it, but I think with this discussion, I would like to withdraw Amendment Number Two. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's that. Well, we don't have any other amendments at this time for Bill 20-24. It will come back as amended on April 15. We will move on. I think our last order of business. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 8-24.
Resolution Number 824, Resolution to Establish and Add-Hoc Committee to Study and Make Recommendations on Personnel Policies for the Legislative Branch of Anarundel County Government.
This bill has many cosponsors. It's been discussed before. We do have some amendments this evening.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get to amendments, are we at the point where I could ask a question?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
It's our resolution, so.
Okay, so for the categories that would sit on the ad hoc committee, the three county residents with knowledge of employment matters, they would be essentially doing research duties and weighing in based on their background and experience.
Correct. Was that a question?
Yes, that is a question.
Well, that was the, this wasn't going to be a committee just appointing citizens with any sort of resume. The goal would be for the council to settle on folks who actually had experience in human resources, employment law, things like that.
With that, I'd like to withdraw Amendment Number Six.
Okay. I'm lost now in my amendments. Is that the only amendment we have? No, we have Amendment Number Seven. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven.
Sure. Madam Chair, we need to sort of go through the opening and closing, the public hearing.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you. I'm not focused on the basketball game. We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 8-24. Madam Secretary, did we have anybody?
We did not receive any testimony through the online testimony tool.
I do not believe we have anyone signed up to testify ahead of time, who signed up ahead of time on Resolution 8-24. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 8-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 8-24.
Resolution Number 824, Resolution to Establish and Add-Hoc Committee to Study and Make Recommendations on Personnel Policies for the Legislative Branch of Anarundel County Government.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven.
Just getting back to my amendment. Amendment Number Seven. This amendment changes the deadline for the final report of the committee.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up to the discussion that we had during the previous council meeting, understanding that we're having some changes and we also have a significant amount of work around the corner for the council, comprehensive rezoning budget. I just wanted to give the ad hoc committee a little more flexibility with time, understanding that they could finish before or they could come back to the council and request an extension. But at least out of the gate, they have a little bit of a longer runway than initially drafted in the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Is there, is there any comments on Amendment Number Seven? Seeing none, just my own comments. Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. I appreciate this amendment and the compromise. I think it's well done. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Seven.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Seven has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, I actually have that we can vote on this tonight as amended. Is there any further discussion before we take the final vote? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 8-24 as amended.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 824 as amended has been adopted.
Is there any business to be brought before the county council at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until April 15, 2024.